We will now reconvene the City Council's special meeting. Are there any final actions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No final action tonight.
Okay. We will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, November 14th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Aquino?
Here.
Chalam Charla?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Rorba?
Here.
And Rodriguez?
Here. Let us all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda updates?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor. There is additional information transmittal for items four, twelve, and thirteen on tonight's agenda. A copy has been previously provided to you, and those additional information transmittals are also available on the table in the back.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Yeah, your next item this evening is going to be Business from the Floor.
Okay. Business from the Floor is the public's opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item within the City Council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There is a speaker timer on the podium in front of you that displays the time you have remaining of your three minutes. The color will change to yellow when you have thirty seconds left and turn to red and blink when your three minutes are complete. We ask that everyone respect the three-minute limit to ensure that all speakers have equal opportunity to address the City Council. And we do have some requests to speak.
Yeah, so you have thirty requests to speak this evening under Business from the Floor. Your first speaker is, and again, like I said, we'll call out the speaker and then the next two speakers so you can know to get ready if you hear your name. Our first speaker tonight will be Ella Triplet, who will be followed by Bob Triplet, who will be followed by Rohan Alvi.
I just want to make a really quick comment that we have thirty requests to speak at three minutes. That is an hour and a half. If there is something that someone had said before you that you want to reiterate and cut your time in half, we welcome that. And if you do offset your time to someone else, that person will have a limit of six minutes. Welcome.
Hello. I would like to defer my time to Bob Triplet, my father.
Okay. Good evening.
Okay, when you're ready, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Many of you recognize me, who is often sitting at this seat right here. Tonight, I come not only as an employee of the City of Folsom, but as a resident, husband, father, and a coach to many. I've been an employee and a resident of Folsom for over twenty years. My name is Bob Triplet, and my family and I reside in District Two. Being an employee and a resident has afforded me the opportunity to be keyed in on local government. I come tonight to share my story that could easily affect you or your loved ones. On October 2nd, 2023, there was a brutal stabbing at Livermore Park, and those involved are homeless. On that morning, I was called out to conduct CSI, Crime Scene Investigation. I will leave out many of the details, but remember, this gruesome stabbing occurred at a public restroom at Livermore Park. While processing the scene, I had to remove the trash bag from the trash can. While doing so in a careful manner, I felt a small prick on my right index finger. Although the object was still inside the trash bag, I immediately knew what it was. I removed my gloves and noticed there was only a small amount of blood. The small amount of blood confirmed my suspicion. However, we still needed to sift through the trash bag, not only looking for the item that pricked me, but the possible evidence related to the stabbing. With the assistance of my CSI team, we identified the object as one of those two disgusting needles, as you see here. Yes, those are used needles with someone else's blood, and we can safely assume they contain drugs before they were washed out with whoever's blood. We don't know. What we don't know is what else do they contain: HIV, hepatitis, or any other contagious diseases. Luckily for me, I had the knowledge to go to Folsom to begin a twenty-one-day cycle of medications and blood lab work for the next six months. From day twelve to twenty-one, I experienced sporadic nausea due to medication. As I speak right now, I still must wait for additional blood work to find out if I attracted any contagious diseases. That is my story, but it very well could be your story, or a Folsom resident's story, or that of a kid playing at one of our parks. So just envision that you or your loved ones are using that public restroom at your local Folsom park and accidentally dropped their cellphone in the trash can. While reaching inside to retrieve that cellphone, they feel a prick. My assumption is most would retrieve their cellphone and continue with their day, not knowing what truly pricked them, but ended up being one of these needles. This is simply one scenario, as transients and drug users are not properly discarding their syringes, so getting pricked by one of these disgusting needles could happen anywhere. This scenario is not just impacting our parks, but our residential areas, businesses, and historical district. Our community, and especially our youth, should not be susceptible to the filth and biohazard waste that the homeless and transients leave behind in our parks and shopping centers. Mr. Economy mentioned at the October tenth City Council meeting that he regularly picks up syringes at his shopping center. Livermore Park is the park that my family and I use the most. I have watched my kids growing up playing youth sports at Livermore Park. I still currently coach at Livermore Park, and still, to this day, my kids play beach volleyball on the weekends under the lights. I'm astonished and would have never thought that Livermore Park would have a stabbing involving the homeless. Livermore Park is being affected by homeless and a harsh reality how deeply embedded the homeless are since they are no services remotely close to this park. I will ensure that my story continues, and it reaches all the kids who play sports at Livermore Park or any other City of Folsom park, so they know what to do when they get pricked. Do I have a minute and twenty-five, or is it racecycled through? All right. The current state of homelessness in our community is not the quality of life as we as residents, business owners, employees, or other stakeholders want to see. Homelessness and public safety is the number-one priority. You heard it from the public safety at the past couple of City Council meetings, and it was clear on what priorities were from the survey that was sent out earlier this year. I sat in that chair on October tenth City Council meeting, listening, but at that time wasn't sure how public I wanted to make this. That evening, I listened to the community and business owners and saw the photographs. There was one photograph at that City Council meeting that resonated with me. That photograph was one of Mr. Doug Schalzy, who shared it. It was a baseball diamond. Inside the dugout was a homeless encampment. This is just another example of the invasion of the transient population to our parks and community affecting all of us, including our youth. After the City Council meeting, I decided I would share my story, and that is why I'm here tonight. So between homeless encampments, used needles in our community, filth, homelessness and transient population wandering in and out of traffic, and a homeless overdosing in public, we as citizens look to you, the Folsom Leadership Group, as our leaders, on how Folsom will be distinctive by nature. So I will pose the question not only to our City Council?
You have time.
But our City Manager. How will you lead Folsom to stop the continued invasion of homelessness and transient population into our community? And do you have an action plan or an advisory forum that will help with consistency and duration on a long-term and results-oriented plan for homelessness, along with the rest of the community, or compelling you, our Folsom Leadership Group, to take action?
Thank you, Mr. Triplet.
Okay, our next speaker will be Rohan Alvi, who will be followed by Rubina Alvi, who in turn will be followed by Faris El-Kazan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can I start?
Yes.
Dear members of the City Council, I am Dr. Rohan Alvi, and I am the President of the Muslim community of Folsom. Standing here before you tonight, I represent a community comprising of over four hundred fifty families and more than twelve hundred individuals who choose to live, work, and worship in Folsom. As a medical student, the Latin principle of primum non nocere, or first to do no harm, was always ingrained in my training and taught me that any action I take as a physician should do more good than harm. While essential in medicine, this concept resonates far beyond the walls of a hospital. It is a guiding beacon in our community's actions and decisions. Regrettably, this council's recent declaration on October twenty-fourth, which condemned acts of terrorism against Israeli civilians without acknowledging the plight of the thousands of innocent civilians in Palestine, completely disregarded the vital principle of first to do no harm. By omitting any mention of the illegal occupation of Palestine, which is the longest military occupation in modern history, this council's one-sided statement caused more harm than good within our Folsom community. As the President of Folsom's largest Muslim organization, I am the voice of your constituents. Among them are those directly affected by the ongoing crisis, families torn apart, living in perpetual anxiety, yearning for any semblance of peace. How do you think they felt when they read the declaration that did not so much as acknowledge their suffering, or their pain, or their anguish, or even their existence? I speak for the Palestinian families of Folsom who stay up at night repeatedly trying to reach out to loved ones in Gaza, hearts heavy with concern and hope, only to find out that more of their family members have been murdered, their only crime being that they were born under the illegal occupation of their homeland. I speak for our caring neighbors, the Jewish people of Folsom, who have reached out to our community, who have shed tears with us and asked us what we need and how they can help during these difficult times, the ones who have reminded us that the brutal actions of the Israeli government are in direct violation of their beautiful Jewish faith, and that this one-sided declaration by the council is not in their name. And I speak for the people of conscience in Folsom who oppose the apartheid state that is Israel, who strongly condemn the ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people, who oppose indiscriminate killing of civilians, who oppose the bombing of churches, hospitals, and ambulances, and who most of all just want to make sure that their Folsom friends and neighbors are doing okay during such troubling times. These are the people of Folsom that have been harmed by this council's declaration. While those bombs are dropping seven thousand miles away, the people of Folsom are also hurting, and their stories are stark reminders of the human cost of genocide and the dire need for inclusive dialogue. I implore this council to reconsider its stance and support a resolution that remembers the Palestinian people, not only in Palestine, but also here in Folsom. And if it is the feeling of this council that the occupation of Palestine has nothing to do with their duties and responsibilities, then let us remember that first, we should do no harm. But that harm has already taken place with the October twenty-fourth declaration, and I now urge you to please help us heal, and I urge the council to pass a resolution in support of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if I could just ask, if I could just ask that we hold off the clapping until the very end so that we can get through the thirty speakers?
Okay, just one moment. So our next speaker will be Rubina Alvi, who will be followed by Faris El-Kazan, followed by Stan Guz, I think.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rubina Alvi, and I'm on the Board of the Muslim Community of Folsom. I would like to start with addressing the reason for our dismay at the declaration that was put out on October twenty-fourth, and I ask the City Council to have a memory longer than five weeks. I can tell you about the occupation, the targeted killing of journalists, doctors, pregnant women, and children before October seventh. Do you remember? I can tell you about unpunished murders of Palestinian civilians by Israeli settlers before October seventh. Do you remember? I can tell you about the Israeli support for Hamas to prevent the establishment of a Palestinian state prior to October seventh. Do you remember? I can tell you about the ten thousand Palestinians held in Israeli prisons, some as young as eleven years old, before October seventh. Do you remember? I can tell you about how Israeli officials refer to Palestinians as animals to be exterminated before October seventh. Do you remember? I can tell you about the direct effects that Israeli propaganda and one-sided resolutions have had on Palestinian and Muslim-American communities. Do you remember, or even care? These five weeks of bombing, five weeks of killing, five weeks of bloodthirsty targeted attacks on homes, hospitals, schools, churches, and mosques, five weeks of a child killed every ten minutes, blown to bits, maimed in their beds, five weeks of burning toxic white phosphorus, five weeks of established war crimes where no one is safe, over twelve thousand souls lost, the carnage is too much to bear. How long will we stay silent on this topic? Remember. Remember the denial of basic human rights of life and liberty to the Gazans under a seventeen-year blockade and Palestinians under seventy-five-plus years of apartheid. Since this council was quick to unequivocally condemn acts of terrorism, can you unequivocally condemn the Israeli government for the genocide being perpetrated against Palestinian civilians in Gaza? Since you mentioned harmony, respect, and understanding in your declaration, can you understand that these require recognition and acknowledgement of a people under a blockade and siege? It requires people of conscience to stand up and say, "No more. No more cowering to the military-industrial complex and politicians who do not represent the people. No more cowering to the known corrupt war criminal Netanyahu. No more to disgusting propaganda of beheaded babies. No more claims of anti-Semitism for demanding basic human rights. No more blatant land grabs. No more genocide anywhere, ever. Free Palestine." Thank you.
If we could please, if we could please hold off the clapping until the very end?
Okay.
We have a lot of speakers to get through tonight.
Yeah, our next speaker will be Faris El-Kazan, followed by Stan Guz, followed by Nazra Khan.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Faris Dyauddin Asam Alghosan. I have lived in Folsom for most of my life, and I am a constituent, and I am a Palestinian from the city of Gaza. Twenty-one days ago, on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, this council released a declaration reaffirming its commitment to promoting an inclusive and safe environment for all. Twenty-one days ago, this council failed to promote an inclusive, safe environment for all. Furthermore, it failed to uphold the basics of human dignity. Twenty-one days ago, on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, when you released your declaration, almost six thousand innocent Palestinian civilians, men, women, and children, were murdered by the state of Israel. Israel has cut access to water to more than two-point-five million innocent Palestinian civilians, has cut off electricity to more than two-point-five million innocent Palestinian civilians, had cut off water and food to more than two-point-five million innocent Palestinian civilians. Internet has been cut off, churches, mosques, and hospitals have been bombed, and all of this happened on your television screens. And with all this, this City Council released a statement, not even one word mentioning the people of Palestine, not one word mentioning the Palestinians, not one word mentioning Gaza. My family in Gaza has faced unimaginable sufferings. Their houses have been bombed. They have been forced to relocate multiple times. The smell of death surrounds them, and two hundred of them are now living under a single roof, rationing food and water amongst themselves. After days of trying to call my cousins in Gaza, when we can finally make a call, we don't ask if they're okay. We ask them if they are alive. Today, twenty-one days after this City Council released its statement, thousands of innocent, twelve thousand innocent Palestinian civilian, men, women, and children have been murdered, all of this happening on your television screen. This is the reality of Palestinians like myself and my family, your constituents. Who is this all in your statement? Not Palestinians, not me. Your statement all explicitly excluded the Palestinians. Is the Palestinian life worth nothing to you? Or our lives are just as much worth as any of yours here and anyone in the world? Members of the City Council, I ask you, my life, my cousin's life, my uncle's life, my aunt's life, any Palestinian's life, are they worth nothing to you? Not even a mention on some paper? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Faris.
Okay, our next speaker will be Stan Guz, who will be followed by Nazra Khan, who will be followed by Nabila Basel.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Taz Gurtavoy. I live here in Folsom. I'm Jewish. I didn't plan to come here. I didn't prepare any speech or anything like that. I saw what's happening outside, and I'm here to tell you that we don't need to bring this hate into our city in Folsom. I'm against the loss of innocent life of Muslims and Jewish and any other. I'm sorry about the hundreds that were Muslims killed in Syria and Yemen, and thousands of people killed in a Ukrainian war and other places, including Israel and Gaza. I see a lot of kids here, and I can understand why my son hears similar things, similar chants that I hear outside in school in Folsom directed at him here in Folsom, just because he's Jew. I grew up in a country when I was his age where anti-Semitism was a regular thing, and I just can't believe it, that my kids need to experience it here in California. I'm here to tell you that Muslims and Jews don't need to be enemies. It's not written anywhere. I'm asking the council to condemn the hate speech against Jewish people, against the Jewish community, because I'm afraid that after the chants that I heard outside is going to grow worse and is going to endanger our kids even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Nazra Khan, who will then be followed by Nabila Basel, followed by, I'm sorry, Ishkar Raza.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's Nazia Khan.
Nazia, thank you.
I'm here today to speak on behalf of hundreds of Folsom families regarding the humanitarian catastrophe that is unfolding in Gaza. It is sadly only the latest in a chapter of long, long suffering that started in nineteen forty-eight. Gaza today has a population of, you've heard, two-point-three, two-point-five million people held in a cramped area of hundred-and-forty-one square miles. They have been under land, sea, and air blockade for the past seventeen years, and it's noteworthy that the seventy percent of population of Gaza today are refugees or children of refugees from the nineteen forty-eight Nakba, where eight hundred thousand Palestinians of all faiths were driven from their homes in what is today Israel. I'm gonna share some facts from the United Nations Office for Coordination of Humanitarian Affairs. As of November tenth, because for the past four days, they have not been able to confirm, or in other words, count the bodies of people dead, there's been over eleven thousand Palestinians killed. Seventy percent of those killed are women, children, and elderly. Forty-five hundred of them are children, more children killed than four years of international conflict. We won't know the full extent of damage and death. This is not me. This is the Assistant Secretary of State, Barbara Leaf. She says, "We estimate the numbers to be higher because they cannot get to the people who are buried in the rubble." One-point-five million people are displaced, one-point-five million. Imagine having to walk miles with whatever you can grab, with babies on your back, with elderly people pushed in wheelchairs, miles, hoping, hoping that you will be safe in the south, but you are not. You can be bombed on the way, you can be bombed when you reach there. You have to walk.
Fifteen seconds, Nazia.
There's a lot. I'm just gonna say, we have to. Why do we have to speak up? We do, because decades of violence and war has not brought peace. It will not bring peace. There is no military solution to this problem. We do have to act now.
Nazia, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker will be Nabila Basel, followed by Ishkar Raza, followed by Miriam Hussain.
Good evening.
Good evening, Nabila Basel.
Thank you. I do apologize.
Good evening. Assalamu alaykum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. My name is Nabila Basel. I am American, Muslim, Palestinian, and from Gaza. Right now, the whole world and our communities in the U.S. are watching what's happening in Gaza. There are two sides for every story. More and more people are understanding what's happening today is a result of seventy-five years of injustice. My husband was two months old when the first nineteen forty-eight Palestinian Nakba happened, and the second, twenty-three Palestinian Nakba, is happening right now. Gaza's babies in the incubators are dying. More than a million and a half people had been displaced. Twenty-nine thousand people had been injured, and eleven thousand five hundred people had died due to indiscriminate bombing. Seventy of them are children and women, some of whom are journalists and UN workers. The Palestinians in Gaza have their access to water, food, fuel, electricity cut off for over a month, now making everyday life unimaginable challenge. Healthcare systems are crumbling due to these conditions, and humanitarian aids are very limited and not enough. The Palestinians deserve to have a respectful and decent life. The Palestinian children deserve to play with toys rather than looking for their parents' remains in the ruins. How many more children need to die before this genocide stops? I would like for our beautiful city of Folsom, the city of Folsom, to pass a resolution, to pass a resolution for immediate ceasefire as to encourage other levels of government to stop the genocide. As a U.S. taxpayer and a voter, I believe that my voice and the voice of millions of people protesting for free Palestine should be seriously heard.
Twenty seconds, Nabila.
Free Palestine, free Palestine, free Palestine!
Okay, our next speaker will be Ishkar Raza, who will be followed by Miriam Hussain, who will be followed by Aisha Aslam.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ishfakur Raza.
Yes.
Is this good?
Yes.
Hi. Ishfakur Raza is my name. I've been here in Folsom for about eight years. It's a pleasure to be speaking in front of you. I wanted to talk about silence first, but wanted to address one of the issues that was brought up, and is always being brought up in every discussions that I had about being anti-Semitic, right? So the events that are going on today, Hamas and then, you know, Israel for the past thirty days bombarding the hell out of Gaza, it is a seventy-five-year history. Before that, if you go through the whole history of Muslims and the Jews, you will see that the Jews were always being supported by the Muslims. When Salahuddin went into Jerusalem, he saved the city of Jerusalem from the Christians, the Jews were in there. Not a single Jew was harmed. When Persia was ruling part of the Middle East, Muslims came over, took over the whole region of the Middle East, that saved the Jews. So I really don't have a list of all of that because I didn't come prepared to talk to that particular topic, but it's really hurtful when people call us anti-Semitic, because we are not being anti-Jewish here. Is the state of Israel... It's the state of Israel which is bombing the daylight out of Gaza. Right? So we really, really need to realize that. When you hear chants out on the street, when you hear chants in the schools, they're not talking about harming any Jews. They're talking about what the state of Israel is doing. Please keep that in mind, and whenever I hear people talk about Palestine, they're not talking about wiping the Jews off the face of the earth. For the past 75 years, we have been at odds. Go back 3,000 years, Jews and Muslims have been supporting each other. Muslims in particular have been supporting the Jews through the history of the Jewish, the nation. So please keep that in mind. What I wanted to really talk about, I don't really have that much time.
Yeah, 47 seconds.
Yes. What I wanted to point out was about silence, okay? You passed the resolution. As people have said before me, there's no mention of Palestine. When it did not mention Palestine, it essentially means you were being silent on that, right? So I had a list of things where, what does silence do? 770, sorry. Couple of million Jewish Romans were killed by the Nazis, right? What did the Americans do? America did not do anything early on. Later, we did get into a war and then, you know, fought against them, right? But early on, as we saw things happening, we remained silent. What happened? Millions were killed. Srebrenica, right? They wiped out the whole city of Srebrenica, the Serbian nationals. What did we do? We didn't do anything. Myanmar, they are wiping out Rohingya out of their city. What did we do? We didn't do anything. So I'll just end with a quote from the Quran. The translation is that, "Sufficient is God as witness between me and you." You know, we just spoke under God, right? So my request is, let's not say stay silent. Let the world and God know what Folsom's moral standing is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Miriam Hussain, who'll be followed by Ayesha Aslam, who'll be followed by Hadi Faros.
Respected mayor, okay, good evening. Respected mayor, council members, and attendees, good evening. My name is Miriam Hussain, and I'm here today to share my poem about Gaza. "The Story of Gaza, A Story Untold, Of human suffering yet hearts so bold. Let's break the chains of biased views, Embrace humanity and see what's true. A people strong, their faith a shield. In the midst of chaos, their courage is revealed. People of Palestine so brave and strong, Filled with courage, they shall not be gone. Innocent souls, their lives laid bare In a world that seems not to care. Yet they stand firm, their faith rise. With hope in their hearts, to the heavens they fly. Let's view this violence, human to heart. Recognize that they are tearing lives apart. It is never justifiable, never right. Bombs every day and every night. Genocide is a word they fear. They avoid the fact that dead bodies are everywhere. In heaven, their souls find their rest. Released from pain, they're truly blessed. In that eternal realm above, Children are free to laugh, free to play, and free to love. No more despair and no more fear. In Allah's grace, they draw near. Yet the frightening scene, where killing innocents has become routine. Western media, a narrative spun, Painting the oppressed as the villain, the undone. Double standards, a blunt display, Where truth and bias begin to sway. A world misled, minds led astray, While innocent lives become the price to pay. Let's, let us view this violence not with hate, But through the lens of a shared human fate. For in the eyes of children's innocent gaze, Lies a begging for peace in these explosive days. Innocent shattered, dreams torn apart. Innocent lives a heavy burden on the heart. We must unite and take a stand. For killing the innocent, we cannot withstand. For Gaza's people, their faith stands strong. Amidst the bombs and the chaos, they still belong. Around the globe, voices rise. Protests echo underneath the skies. For Palestine's freedom, we stand and fight, Demanding justice and seeking what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. Can I just say that I always appreciate hearing the voices of our youth, and you are a very articulate young lady.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Peace be upon you.
Thank you, Miriam.
Okay, our next speaker is Ayesha Aslam, who'll be followed by Hadi Faros, followed by Haroon Rashid.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ayesha Aslam. I was born and raised in Woodland, California. I am a longtime resident and homeowner here in Folsom from the past 10 years. When I first heard about Palestine getting bombed, I didn't think much of it because I don't usually pay attention to politics. I had no idea what these people had been going through. And so I started watching the news. And what I noticed was, all of the coverage was one-sided. If this is a war, why are not, why are we not seeing both sides? Why are we only seeing one side? Why is everything one-sided? Thank goodness for social media. Through social media, I was able to see what was happening on the other side, which was heartbreaking. I saw dead babies being pulled out of rubble. I saw mothers holding their dead babies, crying. And I realized, you don't have to be Palestinian to care about these people. You just have to be a human being. You have to ask yourself, why are they only showing one side? I learned what war crimes were. Bombing hospitals, religious centers, cutting off water. Let me repeat that. Cutting off water, stopping food and aid from entering their state. War crimes. I realized rather quickly what was going on. I did some research on my own, and I found that these people had been suffering from oppression for over 75 years. I was unaware of that. I had no idea, and I'm ashamed to admit that. I urge you, city of Folsom, please, call for a ceasefire. Please reconsider your declaration. Because I know, when you look deep in your hearts, you will say, "This is not okay." A genocide is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayesha.
Okay, our next speaker will be Hadi Faros, followed by Haroon Rashid, who will then be followed by Fatima Rashid.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hadi Faros. I'm one of the healthcare providers and residents of Folsom for the past 10 years or so. It's a pleasure to be here and talking with you. And I'm sure you saw a bunch of people outside and chanting for freedom. That's what we want. That's what the country is based on. They want their freedom. They want the bombs to stop. So first thing I want to say as a healthcare provider, as a human being, I want to condemn all kinds of violence. Violence and oppression. Not just violence, violence and oppression, which is missing when people talk. You know, they talk about just violence. Yes, violence, there's no room in any place. But oppression too shouldn't have any room in any place. Our hearts go out to suffering kids and innocent people on both sides. And you've heard the stats about how many Palestinians, how many childrens have died. We want you to feel that. We want you to feel it the same way as you feel for another individual or another, maybe a Jewish kid, or a Jewish civilian or elderly patient. You need to feel that. You need to treat it the same. We see hospitals being bombed. It's a war crime, and you declared as such. It is a war crime regardless. Who does it? Have you seen any country bombing another hospital? Have you seen anybody in your history? Maybe 100 years ago, but recently, I mean, we have, we pride ourselves with our civilization, and we see the hospitals being bombed. Hospitals supposed to be protected by Geneva Convention, by humanitarian law. We see that the hospitals in Gaza don't have electricity, don't have fuels, don't have medications. They do surgeries in the hallway on patients who don't get any anesthetics. Think about it, if that person or that child is your child or your relative, how would you feel? We see people, patients in, babies in hospitals or ICU patients die because they can't get oxygen. Think about it. How would you feel if, God forbid, our Folsom hospital runs out of oxygen supplies? This is a local issue. The question was that, you know, we have in a smaller city government, we don't deal with international politics. This is international crisis affecting your local constituents. We have people who have their family members, their parents, their cousins, and everybody in the family are being bombed. We have a patient of mine who came a few weeks ago just for a routine visit, elderly patient, a Christian Palestinian patient, and I asked, you know, "How are you doing?" She broke out in tears. She cried. She says, "I'm Palestinian." And she told me later that they, I'm gonna quote it, "They kicked us out many decades ago. We were made to walk and leave everything behind. Our fully furnished house, everything we had, our land, everything we walked out just to save our lives."
10 seconds, Hadi.
And they are doing it again. They're taking our lands and they're killing our people. I'd like to ask you to please ask for ceasefire. Please pass the resolution.
Hadi, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Haroon Rashid, followed by Fatima Rashid, who will be followed by Gazal Bavi.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Haroon. I lived in Folsom for almost 20 years. I want to bring to your attention the humanitarian crisis that all the other speakers have been talking about. It is unfolding in front of our eyes in Gaza. There are no other words to describe the situation in Gaza other than to say it is genocide. As of yesterday, at least 32 patients, including three premature babies, have died in Al-Shifa Hospital when the power generator ran out of fuel. Bear in mind, the power, the water, the fuel, and even who goes in and who goes out of the territory of Gaza has been closely controlled by state of Israel for the past 20 years, making this strip of land totally impoverished. You may ask why we care about something happening far away from here. First of all, we, United States of America, are funding this genocide with our own tax dollars when the House approved 14.3 billion military, 14.3 billion military aid package to Israel. We are not only witnessing, but we are actually an active partner in this crime against humanity. Second, the city of ours is home to several Palestinians who still have family in Gaza and have been directly impacted by what is going on there. While the October 24th declaration by mayor condemned the act of terrorism against innocent civilians of Israel, what it failed to mention was that more than 5,000 Palestinian civilians were also killed by that date, October 24th. Most of them were women and children. If the intent of the declaration was to promote inclusivity in city of Folsom, we failed in it. Third, there is a moral obligation for each and every one of us to stand up for justice in the face of human tragedy, whether it is perpetrated by our own allies or not. It is dignity of the people of Palestine which is violated even in their death when a mother has to write the name of her child on their limbs since she knows very well that that is the only way she can identify her child after being blown into pieces by the so-called smart bombs. We ask the mayor and city council to approve a resolution, calling for a ceasefire immediately, and facilitate much-needed humanitarian aid to reach the 2.2 million human beings in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you, Haroon.
Okay, our next speaker will be Fatima Rashid, who'll be followed by Gazal Bavi, who'll be followed by Mak K.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Fatima Rashid, and I'm an eighth grader at Sutter Middle School, here to speak in favor of the resolution and to share my experience as a student. So far, over 11,000 people have already been killed in Palestine, with almost half of them being children. Seeing this breaks my heart, and the adamant refusal to acknowledge these lives and call for a ceasefire by our government is appalling. So I'm calling for the council members to please find it in your hearts to pass this resolution calling for a ceasefire and condemning the continued genocide of the Palestinian people. I realize that there have been concerns raised on the relevancy of this resolution in our small town. And I know that some of the other speakers have already addressed this. However, I would like to bring your attention to how it is really affecting us here as well. You see, for so long, the American media has portrayed Arabs, especially Palestinians and Muslims as barbaric and less than. The Israeli Defense Minister said after October 7th, "On their fourth day of bombing, there will be no electricity, no water, no food, and no gas. Everything will be closed. We are fighting against human animals and will act accordingly." Human animals. This is the kind of rhetoric that is now common and has been used so often that it is becoming normalized. I myself have been subject to this kind of language countless times in my life. Hearing terrorists yelled out at me during passing period is almost a norm. That is a problem in and of itself. However, ever since October 7th, it has increased tenfold. The one-sided reporting of the American media and unconditional support for anything and everything Israel says and does is the reason for this. Just the other day, a boy in my science class remarked after he called my shirt ugly, "Oh, wait, I take that back. You're an Islamist, right? You're probably gonna come and bomb me if you get mad, even though I'm not like Jewish or anything." There have been many other statements like this directed towards me and other Muslim or Arab kids. And this type of misinformation is due to the fact that no one is correcting them. We need more people to speak up and speak out on atrocities happening in Gaza and all over Palestine. You may think that it's irrelevant even if we do pass this resolution because it won't have a big enough impact. However, if every little city stays silent, then nothing will happen. But if all of them gather the courage to stand up for what is right, then our government cannot ignore us. At the very least, this will raise awareness and get people to educate themselves so that "never again," as they say, truly becomes "never again" for the Palestinian people. But it has to start somewhere, and I'm hopeful that it starts here in Folsom. Thank you.
Thank you, Fatima. We have a very big stack of speakers to get through. I would appreciate if you would hold off the clapping until the end. Thank you.
Your next speaker is Gazal Bavi, followed by Mak K, followed by Amani Mohammed.
Good evening. Good evening. Assalamualaikum, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gazal Bavi, and I'm a current student at Sacramento State University studying biology. I want to start off by saying that racism is never wrong, whether, it's always wrong, whether it's against Jews, Muslims, Christians, and people from any religion or culture. I would like to start off by saying that we are here today to be the voice for those that no longer have a voice. I am also here today to be, to represent the people of Ahwaz and Palestine. We are two separate Arab lands that are currently going through the same crisis with the help of the West. They are trying to completely ethnic cleanse us, and this isn't the first time they're trying to ruin Arab lands and Arab countries. It's about time we all lose fear within our hearts and stand against the Westerns giving giving a helping hand ruining and continuing and supporting a genocide. It's about time you and I stand in the right side of history. I came here today to be the voice for my Ahwazi people, for the people of Palestine that are, that have been suffering for the past 75 years, and people still want to be silent. Mothers have to witness their children taking their last breath. Children are still orphans, and there's over thousands of them that are losing parents, siblings, and family. We need a ceasefire. We need to stop supporting bombing of hospitals, homes, and continuous lands. My bio professor, who was an Israeli, he's a Jewish, he stood to my face and made continuous racist remarks, and I'm not even Palestinian. But he doesn't understand, you don't need to be Palestinian, you don't need to be Muslim, you do not need to be Arab to support Palestinians. He made fun of my tefea that I proudly wear to university every single day since October 7th because my life has not been the same since then. I am unable to eat... I am unable to eat properly, drink, and celebrate anything since that day, because I feel guilty. Because my brothers and sisters in Palestine are still suffering. They still don't have food, water, and basic necessities that people, human beings, need. You and I need to stop supporting the genocide. We need to be people, since we have voices, our voices are heard. We wake up every single morning with roof over our heads, water and food. We need to stand with what's right and stop being scared. Stop letting this government that taught us since we were young, the amendments. The first amendment states freedom of speech. Where is our freedom of speech? My history professor stood to my face and said, "I'm unable to speak about this." This is history class. She's an educated woman. Where has all of her education went throughout the door? Because she was unable to bring the name of Palestine. She did not want to say that, yes, what's happening in Palestine is wrong. She said, "Nope, I'm not speaking about this." Why? What happened to freedom of speech?
Time's up. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Maq K., who will be followed by Amina Mohammed, who will be followed by Muna Abokdar.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna start with probably the most famous document in United States history, and it's a quote from there. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Lately, through unjust media narrative, Islamophobia is on the rise in the United States. The Council on American Islamic Relations, CARE, reported that since October 7th, there has been 1,283 Islamophobic and anti-Arab hate crimes reported. And we know, that's always a low-ball number, because the crimes that are committed against Arabs and Muslims are largely under-reported. Here's an example of a few of the crimes that have happened. In Chicago, a six-year-old boy was stabbed by his landlord 26 times. Again, stabbed by his landlord 26 times. He's six years old. And as he was being stabbed, the landlord kept saying, "You Muslims must die." Shots have been fired at protesters such as in Chicago. Cars have ran into protesters such as in Minneapolis. In Cleveland, a man walking home from eating his lunch was a victim of a hidden run. The assailants in that case were using racist rhetoric such as "kill all Palestinians." A girl riding a subway to school in New York was attacked and assaulted as well because she was wearing a hijab. A hijab you see out in the crowd tonight, including on the children. I could keep going, but we're short on time. Putting out a declaration and not mentioning the pain and the anguish of your Arab and Muslim community seems a bit biased. I ask for solidarity and support this week for the Arab and Muslim communities, just as you've given it to other groups the last few weeks. We are members of this community, and to not have the same verbal support from elected leaders has been very telling and unfortunate. Let me give you some statistics, and I still have some time here. Every eight and a half minutes, a child, every eight and a half minutes, a child dies in Gaza. As of yesterday, 11,200 Palestinians have been killed. That would equal to approximately 47,000 Israeli lives and 1.7 million American lives. I was 15 years old when 9/11 happened. There was so much Islamophobic rhetoric happening at that time, and we had to continuously prove ourselves to be American. And it saddens me that another 15-year-old child has to come in here and say the same things again 22 years later. We need to do better.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Amina Mohammed, who will be followed by Muna Abokdar, followed by Luma Dalbaka.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Amina Mohammed, and I was born and raised in Folsom. I'm currently a student at UC Davis. There is so much I can touch on with regards to the apartheid, occupation, genocide, illegal settlements, injustice, and terror we see unfolding in Gaza and the West Bank. But I would like to focus on what our community would like to see and hear from you. In light of the recent tragic events unfolding in Palestine, we find it imperative that the Folsom City Council acknowledge and address not only the immediate crisis, but also the alarming rise in Islamophobia in the United States, which has increased by 216% since October 7th. We, as residents of the City of Folsom, have elected you all as officials into Folsom City Council, and we, as a community, have the power to remove you from elected office as a result of your lack of support and response to the rise in Islamophobia. It is with deep disappointment that we acknowledge the recent discriminatory declaration made by the City of Folsom and Mayor Rodriguez. The City of Folsom's failure to condemn the tactics of genocide, apartheid, and ethnic cleansing employed by the Israeli government that have inflicted unimaginable horror and grief on the Palestinians for decades is despicable. These blatant violations of human rights and international law cannot be overlooked or justified. It is essential that the City of Folsom recognize the immense suffering endured by the Palestinian people. With over 12,000 innocent lives lost, from over which 4,500 were children, we are currently witnessing one of the largest atrocities of the 21st century within the largest occupation to ever exist. The refusal to acknowledge the gravity of this situation is a stark failure of empathy and human compassion on part of the Folsom City Council. In light of concerns about the blacklisting and doxing of pro-Palestinian students and the stifling of free speech, we demand that the City of Folsom strongly condemn any attempts to suppress free speech and marginalize members of our community. Recent incidents such as the rise in harassment, threats, ridicule, and hate crimes targeted towards Muslims and individuals speaking out against genocide, apartheid, and occupation are troubling. Such bigotry has resulted in the tragic death of a six-year-old Palestinian boy, the death of a pediatrician in Texas, and numerous hate crimes against pro-Palestinians across the United States. We demand that the City of Folsom unequivocally condemn all forms of Islamophobia and pledge to foster an environment of safety and empathy for those affected by this ongoing genocide.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Muna Abokdar, followed by Luma Dalbaka, followed by Stephen Torrey.
Good evening, you guys. I wasn't planning on speaking. I'm not a strong public speaker, so I apologize for the non-eye contact that might happen. But how can I stay silent? How do I not use my voice when so many others are not able to voice theirs? I was born and raised in this area, never perceiving myself as any different than anyone else around me, apart from my hard-to-pronounce last name. My name, Muna Abokdar, the same Abokdar family that has been indirectly affected by the indiscriminate hate practiced against children by the Zionist state of Israel. In 2014, Zionist settlers kidnapped my cousin, 16-year-old Hamad Abokdar, from the front of his house, beat him up, forced him to drink gasoline, and burned him alive with what remained of the gasoline. What's happening to Palestinian kids right now brings back these heart-wrenching memories. And so, we cannot remain silent. Despite this and despite the carnage that is happening in Gaza, we here at our home, in our community, have to deal with Islamophobia. Islamophobia that caused a reading tutor I hired for my daughter, eight-year-old right here, to walk out midway through our first tutoring session, because my daughter mentioned she was Palestinian and Muslim, and she thought we were from here. To which I say, "I am from here. I've been here my whole life, but I'm a proud Palestinian-American." Because of this Islamophobia, my hijab-wearing mother, who's been here since she was 15 and worked hard to raise eight kids and believed in the American dream so deeply, can't feel safe going to the grocery store alone. Israel claims self-defense. It claims the war is in retaliation. How long is that a valid excuse to commit genocide? To have the green light from the rest of the world, and collective pun... Sorry, I'm sorry. To have a green light from the rest of the world, to murder and collectively punish 2.2 million people in Gaza and terrorize many more throughout the rest bank. I'm here because I can no longer stay silent. It's hard to go about our daily lives, try and engage in small chit-chat in the office, while your family and friends are hungry, thirsty, cold, and we don't know if they'll be alive the next day. Over 11,000 innocent lives taken, kids like my kids, just being born in the wrong place. The people of Gaza are trapped in Gaza. Bombs constantly dropping on schools and hospitals. There's no safe place. Israeli violation of international laws are happening on a daily basis to an entire population, being denied food, water, electricity, and fuel. If they aren't killed by the bombs, they'll die of starvation and disease. Imagine having to watch your loved ones' bodies being eaten by birds or dogs, because there's no time to safely bury the bodies.
Eight seconds, Hadi.
This is seen as a complicated issue. It's not a complicated issue. It has to end. The time to be silent is when kids are sleeping, not when they're dying. Please urge you for a ceasefire.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luma Dalbaka, followed by Stephen Torrey, who will be followed by Ashraf.
Good evening.
Good evening. By now, you have heard many dates and figures as they pertain to the Palestinian-Israeli conflict. It has been 75 years since Israeli independence coincided with the great catastrophe for Palestine, or the Nakba. But ironically, in that same year was the indoctrination of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Out of the contradictions of World War II, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights has offered us a starting point for which to articulate basic moral, ethical ambitions as global citizens irrespective of race, religion, class, gender, or geography. It is ironic and sad that we continue to see the expulsion, murder, and to date, permanent dislocation of more than 2 million Palestinians. Across our nation and around the globe, communities of people are organizing in droves, citing with their humanity as they bear witness to the excising and removal by any means necessary of the Palestinian people through a disproportionate response by Israel towards Hamas that has come at the cost of elevating counts of women, men, and children. In protest worldwide, across social media, and now in our very own Folsom, no other topic has had the propensity to pull together in solidarity so many people behind a common goal, the right of every person to be born free and equal in dignity and rights. I suspect many of you are feeling overwhelmed by this situation. How are you to solve this problem? That is not my request. As Mayor Rodriguez reminded us during the State of the City, there is something special about Folsom: a deep sense of community, a spirit of generosity, and a culture of caring and support. My request is simple: Call for a ceasefire to preserve human life. In this moment, Palestinians in Gaza are trapped by dwindling resources to sustain life. As the situation worsens through minimal action on the part of the US government, Israel's largest and strongest ally, Palestinians draw closer to erasure. As you wonder, "Why don't Arab countries just take them in? Where is their humanity?" I submit to you, they would be complicit in the erasure of a Palestinian people as new Israeli settlers move into the erect settlements from the rubble. Too many of our political leaders have worked to censor views and comments from US citizens on this topic, citing that it is not a domestic matter. But the moment the US decided to fund Israel's IDF, they made it a domestic matter.
15 seconds, Muna.
Because I, as a voting American, do not condone the distribution of my tax dollars to perform Israel's ongoing colonization project, one that strongly mirrors the US's own history with the genocide and extermination of Native American tribes.
Luma, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Stephen Torrey. Stephen will be followed by Ashraf, who will be followed by Hia El-Khatib.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephen. I'm 26 years old, and for all of those 26 years, I have called Folsom my home. As a narrator, poet, and writer, I have always found it easiest to express myself through words, and what follows are my beliefs on the situation in Palestine and why I am here to call for a ceasefire. I have found it amazing how a simple piece of fabric can represent the hearts of a people. A heart so heavy that it would break mere mortal men, yet this thread bears the weight with such ease you would think it was sewn from the divine. The needle that pulls this thread has fed the souls of its people for generations. From the sands, they built a culture that would forever stand the tests of time. Excuse me one sec, I need to pull up my script.
Sure, that's fine.
Somewhere between the... They fed the souls of their people for generations, and somewhere between the olive trees, the fish in the seas, and the crossroads that intertwine their land, they found home. From the sands, they built a culture that would forever stand the tests of time, and this time is no different, as an empire attempts to snuff out their flame, yet it will burn long after the Iron Wall falls. For as long as there are sacred lips to utter, "Allah Akbar," "God is great," there will be faith, there will be hope, there will be vines that grow up through our veins so when we wither and fade, something beautiful will be left in our place. Nasreen, wild rose, whose bloom will be a breath of fresh air exhaled from this earth so our descendants are reminded that we are still with them. That breath will turn to breeze and flow through the olive trees as they span from the river to the sea. And that day, Palestine will be free. Amor anim, and thank you for your time, council members.
Thank you, Stephen.
Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Ashraf, who will be followed by Hia El-Khatib, who will be followed by Tariq Khashawahi. Sorry.
Good evening, City Council member. For the last 38 days, there has been over 12,000 people killed. That's a rate of 300 people dying every day. Why we are here? Because if you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem. As the General Secretary of the Muslim Community of Folsom, for the last 38 days, the community is hurting. Our community is hurting. They can't focus, they can't work, they can't be productive. Why? Because there is a genocide being performed as we speak. And as we don't want to condemn, we do not issue a statement, that means another 300 human will die tomorrow, and maybe more, and maybe more. Remember my statement: If you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem. The minute we funded this genocide, we are part of the problem. And it is the obligation for us as a city, as the smallest unit of the society, to speak against injustice, and we're looking for your leadership to represent us and represent the City of Folsom, of what our community, of over 450 families of kids, children, and their extended family are hurting. They need healing. They need your attention to address a declaration that would request immediate ceasefire and would request release of humanitarian access to Gaza so less kids can be dying every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just remind everybody to please hold off the clapping until the very end so that we can get through all the speakers tonight? Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Hia El-Khatib.
Good evening.
Followed by... Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hala El-Khatib. I am a Palestinian Folsom resident of 25 years, and I am here to demand that this body join the global call for a ceasefire in Gaza. And I'm also here to voice my deep disappointment in your failure to acknowledge the ongoing genocide in Gaza in the declaration that you released. As Israel continues its indiscriminate carpet bombing of Gaza over the past month, over 10,000 innocent Palestinian civilians have been murdered. Over 4,000 of those are children. Over a million people have been internally displaced, forced to flee their homes because of the bombardment. These numbers don't even account for all of those who are stuck under the rubble and all of those who are severely injured. Generations of families have been wiped off the civil registry, and we're not talking about nuclear families of five. We're talking about entire bloodlines, Palestinian bloodlines, from young to old, completely exterminated. What we're witnessing is a genocide of the Palestinian people in real time. What we're seeing is collective punishment. This is not only a human rights catastrophe, it's also a clear violation of international law that we should all care about. War crimes are being committed as we speak. The carpet bombing of Gaza, the blockade of food... The carpet bombing of Gaza, the blockade of food, water, electricity, and fuel, the use of illegal white phosphorus bombs that burn flesh to the bone, the bombing of safe havens like hospitals, mosques, churches, and refugee camps where people literally sleep in tents, have inflicted human suffering unimaginable to us all. In fact, to quote the U.N., "The current events in Gaza are a mass ethnic cleansing of Palestinians." The U.N. asserts that the continued military operations by Israel have gone well beyond the limits of international law. This is a local, state, and nationwide issue. I want to emphasize that this is not a distant issue. Much of the Folsom community is comprised of Palestinians and Muslims and allies who are all grieving and in deep mourning. We are unable to go about business as usual when it's our people, our families, our homeland that are being massacred as the world turns a blind eye. We see images and videos of Palestinian fathers holding their dismembered children's severed limbs in bags, doctors pulling patients out of the rubble just to realize that it's their own family members who have been crushed under buildings. These are innocent civilians who are experiencing unbearable pain and suffering. As Folsom residents, we work here, we go to school here, we grow up here, and we contribute to this community. We add to the rich diversity of this community. We deserve to be adequately represented by the leaders we elect. This goes to say that every level of government should care about what's happening to Palestine when it's our tax dollars that's funding this. This genocide is not a Muslim issue, it's not just an Arab issue, it's a human issue. Palestinians are worthy of life, they're worthy of humanity, they're worthy of your empathy and compassion. They are innocent people with hopes, dreams, and families, all which has been stripped from them. The world is failing Palestine, and your declaration that makes no mention of their suffering and did not even utter the word Gaza or Palestine is complicit in that failure. As such, I urge you to release an updated declaration that condemns the genocide in Palestine, and I urge you to call the many members, to join the many members of the international community, the U.N., and the vast majority of American citizens who are calling for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Tariq Kassawina, followed by Mohammed Al-Saki, followed by Justin Long.
Good evening, Tariq.
Good evening, respected members of the city council. I'm here because I cannot remain silent. Before I get started, though, I want to say to our dear Jewish brothers and sisters in this community and in the whole world, freedom, justice, and liberty for the Palestinian people is not anti-Semitism, it's a basic human right. We have an evil upon us. We are witnessing a genocide like we've never seen since the end of World War II, when the world declared, "Never again, never again." I feel lucky that we have such bright children in this community, Masha Allah. They have done such an excellent job elucidating and talking to you guys about the situation. As a physician, I want to relate to you the story that I heard from a pediatric ICU doctor. She was interviewed by BBC News. She taught us a new acronym, W-C-N-S-F, Wounded Child No Surviving Family. This is a thing that was invented 39 days ago when day one of genocide started. She was telling us about this experience of a seven-year-old child, just survived a bomb blast. She lost her whole family. She was caked with white residue, coughing, barely able to speak because the residue was coating her airways. She pulled out a piece of paper from her pocket. She said, "Doctor, can you please find one of my family members? But not my sister because she died." There was 32 names on that list, 32, and they were all killed. I wish I could tell you, this is a one-time occurrence. This is a regular, planned occurrence by the Israeli occupation forces. This is genocide. We are witness to genocide, and I will not remain silent.
10 seconds.
I want to say, as a role model, what the Sunnyvale City Council has shown us as an excellent role model.
Your time is up, sir.
We stand with the children of Gaza. Every innocent...
Sir, your time is up.
...life taken is a travesty, but the continued loss of children is a failure of humanity.
Tariq, your time is up.
Can I finish this, please?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your time. I wish you can denounce this genocide and ask for a ceasefire for the children of Gaza, just like the city council members of Sunnyvale have declared. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tariq.
Okay, our next speaker is Mohammed Al-Saki, followed by Justin Long, who will be followed by Zaid Akhtar, and I apologize for the names I'm getting wrong.
Hi, everyone. I am not a public speaker, it's my first time I come here. I'm a doctor too, and I have been living in Folsom 14 years. I had prepared something to say, but everyone did much better job than me. So I would like to speak a little history, because I know two things that make it very hard for us Palestinians to voice our concern and to tell our story. One is anti-Semitism, because whenever you mention Palestine, like our Jewish friend who was here, he felt unsafe for calling for freedom that made him feel unsafe. And the other one is the double standard that we see glaringly everywhere, including in this council. So about anti-Semitism, I agree, it does exist. And in fact, the creation of Israel was the culmination of European anti-Semitism, because they did not want Jews there. They wanted to get rid of them, so they moved them to the Middle East. And there were a lot of thriving Jewish communities in the Middle East. They did not want to have countries. There were Egyptians, there were Syrians, there were Iraqis. They did not come to Palestine because they felt safe where they were. So there were no anti-Semitism in the Middle East before Israel was created. And the way, the genocidal way it was created led to the hatred of Israel, but not anti-Semitism. And then the media, and here I will just quote an article I read when this started, if you allow me. Let me go from there, I remember. It says, "The most powerful military in the Middle East, supported by the most powerful military in the world, attacking stateless besieged Palestinians with no defense, is thus portrayed as the poor Jews fighting against Nazis." That's how bad the double standard is. And I really hope you just look at it from a humane viewpoint. Forget politics, forget history, just think about what's happening now. It's nothing but genocide, and we can't just ignore it. The statement of October 24th was really not a good one on you, so I hope you come up with one that is fair and that acknowledge our pain and our suffering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed.
Okay, our next speaker is Justin Long, who will be followed by Zaid Akhtar, who will be followed by Yossi Grossbaum. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the City Council. The randomness of the cards suggests that I am switching topics now, and please, I wish to offer my respects for doing that as well. I'm sure we'll be returning, but I'm here to speak as part of 66 concerned members of Folsom Ranch, discussing the SFID3 schools initiative and what we're trying to do for our students, for my children. I'm retiring after 30 years in the United States Navy in two weeks.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Two weeks, two days. I bring gifts. My previous tour prior to this one was at Navy Recruiting Command, where I was third in command, and we studied every high school in America. I have data going back 50 years on every high school, every zip code. We've broken down the country into zip codes. Congratulations. 95630 is what we call a hot zip. A hot zip. Top 5% of all zip codes in the United States for growth and potential for students who are supposed to be succeeding at very high levels of standardized testing, going to college, and what we call pass and remain, graduating from college. There is a significant opportunity here for Folsom to stand out. As we have other speakers who are going to be talking about the data and the numbers, I want to offer my data. I have a logistics cell, an analytics cell, that uses predictive analytics to analyze 95630, and I'm here to tell you, the growth is going to be considerable, such so that I am actually closing districts in San Francisco Bay area, and we are moving our forces up here into this area. Uncle Sam is putting to the tune of $3.4 million into Folsom over the next midterm because we believe in the growth and we believe in the students here, and we understand that there's going to be opportunity for the students, for our students. As you look at the SFID3 issue and what we're trying to get across here, we are predicting significant growth in the Folsom Ranch area, 18,000 households, right now, 47.2 of them have children under 18. We anticipate with our predictive analytics that that is going to grow to 65%.
20 seconds.
I encourage you to look at the numbers. Thank you very much for the op-ed that you did, Councilwoman Roba, I really appreciate that. And again, there's a lot of potential here. We'll be talking a lot more about that, and you'll be hearing some more of the numbers.
There's also a presentation on November 28th...
There's that.
...from the Folsom Cordova Unifeast School District.
There's that one, and then in January is the big day, when we have the decisions that are going to be made that are going to affect how we support our children for the next long time. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Zaid Akhtar, who will be followed by Yossi Grossbaum, who will be followed by Sadia Zourishi.
Good evening, respected council members and all of my fellow residents. 20-year-old almost Folsom resident, been working a lot in the interfaith community. I'm a utility commissioner, and I'm very passionate about racism and fighting against it, bigotry in all forms. I wish to extend the hand of peace and love to all of the Jewish members here as well. If there's anyone anti-Semitic, I'll be the first one standing up with you. That being said, thanks to the many very eloquent, talented youngsters who spoke today, I'm going to skip over a lot of my points, I'm going to focus on one point that is very beloved to us here in America, and that's freedom. I want to paint a picture for you, a situation where you're traveling from Folsom to Orangeville, takes 15 minutes, but it takes you four hours to get there, not because of traffic, not because your car broke down, because you have to go through multiple military checkpoints that are not run by your own country, they're run by a foreign government, maybe the Mexican government or the Canadian government. It means you can't hold down a job. It means you can't go and get educated. Tragically, it means that in many cases, a mother is going to be traveling to deliver birth, to give birth to a child, and she's going to give birth at a checkpoint because she can't get to the hospital, and that baby's going to die. And this has happened many times, it's documented. This is a situation that none of us would accept for ourselves or our fellow citizens in America. Why do we accept it for anyone else in any other country? Why are Palestinians any different? And this is the root cause and the root issue of what we're complaining about is the lack of freedom for Palestinians. Free Palestine should not be controversial. This does not mean anything against Jewish people, Israeli people. This is about the Palestinian people, their lack, lack of basic hopes and freedoms and desires and wishes for the future. All they want is peace, security, and a future of hope. I'm a recent grandfather. I've got a couple of young grandkids, and I witnessed babies that looked like my grandkids struggling to breathe. It's hard to watch, it's harrowing. I force myself to watch these videos because I'm so grateful for what I have and the freedoms I have here, and I desire those freedoms for everybody else. So all I would do is I'd call in all peace-loving people. Violence doesn't work. Violence breeds more violence. You can't bomb for peace. It doesn't work. The only way to have peace in that region, which will benefit all of us in the world, not just people living over there, it will benefit us in America and all over the world, the only way to do it is through negotiated peace, and our government has to show leadership. We must pressure our government to stand up, to respect the international community, and demand that the people get around the negotiating table and talk this out and come up with a solution. Coming from the UK, I saw it happen in Ireland.
15 seconds.
It can work in Palestine and Israel as well. Thank you.
Zaid, thank you, and thank you for your service on our commission.
Okay, our next speaker is Yossi Grossbaum, followed by Sadia Zourishi, followed by Alex Bamer.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to say a few words. I'm not here to debate, I'm not here to argue, I'm just here to ask a couple of questions. First of all, I should apologize to the city council, I feel bad that this has to become something that overtakes your meeting tonight, so there are much more important things that are relevant to the city. Unfortunately, there are a few questions I have that are glaringly omitted from tonight's First question is, why hasn't anyone denounced Hamas? There's a call for a ceasefire, people are asking for a ceasefire. If we look back a couple of weeks, on October 6th, there was no fire. No one was attacking anybody. You may not have been happy with the status quo, and I'm not happy with how things were until then either. There are plenty of things that we could complain about, but no one was bombing, Israel wasn't bombing anyone in Gaza on October 6th. On October 7th, there was a horrific terrorist attack. It targeted innocent individuals, people who were living in their homes. Many of those people who lived near the Gaza border were actually people who were peace activists, who would do everything they could to help the people on the other side of the border in Gaza. We just got word this morning of an individual, or last night, of an individual who was thought to have been kidnapped. We're talking about an innocent, private, 70-year-old woman who was discovered was actually murdered on that day, and her body was so disfigured and so unrecognizable that it took this amount of time to be able to find the evidence that it was her body. She was someone who would constantly try to provide humanitarian services, help people get to hospitals, help people get work permits, and she was murdered by terrorists. On October 7th, on October 8th, on October 9th, October 10th, for weeks before Israel dropped one bomb in Gaza, I didn't hear any complaints, any comments, any denouncing of Hamas. There's unfortunately a pattern of Islamic extremism in all parts of the world that have nothing to do with Israel, far, countries that are completely dominated by Muslim residents. But there's an idea that drives some of the horrific attacks that we've seen in those countries. It's called jihad. I'm wondering why no one's denounced that tonight.
20 seconds.
It's a question. I'm just asking questions that I think need to be addressed. I don't really have any concern at all with the Palestinian residents living in Israel. I have a lot of my own issues with the Israeli government. I think that there's a lot that could be said, but those questions are relevant questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Sadia Zourishi, who will be followed by Alex Bamer, followed by Meg Madden. Sadia, are you in the hallway? Not here? Okay, thank you for letting me know. Next will be Alex Bamer, who will be followed by Meg Madden, who will then be followed by Reem Olaby.
Good evening.
My name is Alex, and I'd like to start out by reading a quote from an early Zionist leader. "You must find a garrison for the land, or find a benefactor who will provide a garrison on your behalf. Zionism is a colonizing venture, and therefore it stands or falls on the question of armed forces." So as you can see, and that was from 1925. This didn't start on October 7th. This started over 100 years ago with the Balfour Declaration. And that's history, which you can read in the... And that's history, which you can read in The Hundred Years' War on Gaza by Rashid Kalidi. Point is, none of this would be happening if it weren't for Israel's existence and its occupation. So I will ask you something, not asked in the mainstream. Do you condemn Israel? Do Palestinians have the right to defend themselves? It's been 100 years. How many more years before you do the bare minimum? It's time that everyone take a side because there is no middle ground in this issue. I know where I stand, on the side of the oppressed, on the right side of both history and the future, because I know Palestine will be free. And even though I'm trembling right now, I know it's nothing compared to what the Palestinians are going through, and they give me strength. We will remember who stood with us, and we will remember who did not. That is not a warning, that is a promise. So nothing less than a complete stop to the bombing, an end to any and all aid to Israel, and a complete and utter end to the occupation of Palestine is acceptable. From the river to the sea, free Palestine.
Thank you, Alex. If we can please hold off the clapping until the end so that we can get through these speakers, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, our next speaker is Meg Madden, who will be followed by Reem Olabi, who will then be followed by Ali Hamad.
Good evening. On October 24th, the Folsom City Council passed a declaration, if the Facebook post I saw is correct, stating that it unequivocally condemns the recent terrific acts of terrorism against innocent civilians in Israel. While I am typically not a fan of city councils weighing in on foreign affairs, the October 7th terror attack on Israel by Hamas operatives should be condemned by every person and entity that believes in the sanctity of life and the value of peace. I also appreciate that the city council waited to make this declaration. It has taken weeks for the full magnitude of the attack to be understood, in part because the slaughter left the bodies of some victims unrecognizable, as well as the uncertain fate of the hundreds who are believed to have been abducted and held hostage in Gaza against international law. Some in Folsom object to the declaration because they want to draw a false moral equivalence between a surprise terrorist attack viciously targeting civilians and the prosecution of war against those who perpetrated that attack by Israeli Defense Forces. The lies of this narrative of false equivalency is leading to a massive rise in open anti-Jew hatred. My dear friend and fellow Folsomite is an Israeli immigrant and a Jew. Due to the rise in open anti-Jew hatred since the October 7th attack, she fears being targeted if she reveals herself by speaking Hebrew with her children in public. Given this antisemitic climate, I am disturbed that an anti-Israel rally was held today at our city hall where the genocidal slogan "From the River to the Sea" was chanted. There were shouts of wanting peace, but I heard no request for Hamas to surrender and release the citizens of Gaza from their control or the Israeli hostages. Yes, in America, you are free to shout any slogan. I would not want it to be any other way. But siding with this terror group at this time is a fracture of the social contract we all live under as Americans. We live in a community where people of many beliefs live side by side. Our kids go to school together, we work together, our houses of worship are close to each other, and we participate in our democracy together. We cannot do that if one group is scapegoated for all of society's ills, and that is what continues to happen with Jews, and it is wrong. Stop lying. Israel, acting in its own defense, is doing everything it can to prevent deaths of civilians as it fights Hamas, an effort impeded by Hamas because Hamas hides in tunnel bunkers, including under hospitals, and uses the residents of Gaza as human shields to protect their weapons of terror and themselves. War is indeed hell, and children die in wars. How unfortunate, then, that the leaders of Gaza declared war on their neighbor Israel on October 7th in the most barbaric way possible.
20 seconds.
They are the cause of the suffering in Gaza. There is no moral equivalency here. I urge the council to continue displaying moral courage and resist pressure to change the original declaration condemning terrorism. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg.
Our next speaker will be Reem Olabi, who will be followed by Ali Hamad, who will be followed by Valerie McCullough.
Good evening. Good evening. So before officially starting, allow me to respond to the gentleman who talked about denouncing Hamas. It's just that people have to know that as Muslims in general, we denounce any violent act against innocent civilians. So that's a rule of thumb, okay? That's the first thing. The second is that people have to know that we're here actually to speak on behalf of the Gazans, the innocent civilians in Gaza. We're not the spokespeople of Hamas. And you might ask me why? The reason is that currently in Gaza, more than 50% of the population are children below the age of 17, which means, did they vote for Hamas to start with? They were born there, right? And they are proud to belong to Gaza, and they hold their heads up high because they belong to Gaza where they're really standing and facing a lot of atrocities, right? So I just wanted to say that in response. And now I can officially start by saying good evening, respected mayor and council members and attendees. I'm Dr. Reem Olabi. I'm a professor that teaches prospective physicians, pharmacists, and dentists, hopefully to become compassionate healthcare practitioners. And among the things that I teach are global public health crisis. And one of the public health crises that is actually carved in my mind and heart, and I cannot take it out, is the public health crisis that has been going on in Gaza. It did not start now, it's not recent, it has been going on for years and years. So basically, it goes back to even before the Operation Cast Lead in Gaza that was launched by Israel on December 27th of 2008. And since then, the healthcare system was weakened by underfunding and a border barrier that prevented medical supplies and people from entering. So imagine how an already deteriorated healthcare system would be functioning now. I want you to imagine what the situation is in hospitals that are not equipped with the needed medications and equipment, let alone exhausted healthcare practitioners. They cannot even properly treat severely injured Palestinians, many of which are children with third-degree burns, children that need amputations, and imagine physicians forced to do surgeries with no anesthesia.
20 seconds.
So I just want you to kindly remember those people when you are revisiting the resolution, and remember what Emily Callahan, who's a nurse activity manager for Doctors Without Borders, who just came two weeks ago, said about that camp that had 50,000 people who had only four toilets.
Your time is up.
Okay, so please remember those. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Ali Hamad, followed by Valerie McCullough, followed by Elena Wagner.
Good evening. I apologize for not having a speech prepared, and I will not be long, but I couldn't be silent when the speaker came up and talked about how Israel was free of blame before the October 7th attacks. This started in 1948 when they kicked Palestinians off of their land, and 1967 when they occupied the West Bank and Gaza Strip and built settlements on top of them. Even earlier this very year, the IDF was raiding the Jennean Refugee Camp, leaving 18 dead. This isn't even the first time the IDF has carpet bombed Gaza. They have done the same in 2009, 2014, and 2021. Saying that Israel did nothing before October 7th is a blatant lie that has allowed the occupation to play the victim card, and then they are able to carry out an ethnic cleansing in the Gaza Strip. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Valerie McCullough, who will be followed by Elena Wagner.
Good evening. Good evening, city council. My name is Valerie McCullough. I am a resident here in Folsom. Before I get into what I did want to say, however, I want to remind everyone of a word I like in the dictionary that's called conflation. And conflation is a noun of the merging of two or more sets of information, texts, ideas, et cetera, into one. Back to my regularly scheduled programming, I have been a Folsom resident since I was four years old for the majority of my life. My parents moved from the Bay Area in order to take a job that my dad was offered. In my my kindergarten year, I was at Oak Chan Elementary, Dragon, and at that time, the school was brand new. The development was brand new. There were promises being made to the homeowners, to prospective Folsamites, on why Folsom is going to be such a great city and what it could provide for families. While I agree that Folsom has been ultimately a really good place to raise a family, it was part of the decision and why I chose to raise my family here in Folsom as well. Having bought in Folsom Ranch, I was very excited to hear that we would be getting a high school in time for my now 10-and-a-half-year-old to possibly attend. Taking you back for a history lesson to the early 1990s, Oak Chan was built with modular buildings. The money for the school wasn't going to be completely used for the school. It wasn't until just a few years ago, with other money that was raised through a different measure, that that school actually got permanent buildings. I attended the school in 1991. Unfortunately, I would not, I am afraid that this will also happen for the residents of Folsom Ranch and the long-term effects that that will have on the city of Folsom and on the economy, as well as the existing homeowners and the possible more expansion of Folsom Ranch and Russell Ranch. I'd like to close with one of my favorite quotes of all time is Maya Angelou. "Do the best you can until you know better; then, when you know better, do better." Now that we have history, we have analytics and data supporting the the need for the schools where they were promised, I'd like you all to take that into consideration, and I'd be welcome to hearing ideas in the future.
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Elena Wagner.
That's it? Good evening. At the October 24th city council meeting, the city manager, Elaine Anderson, recommended that the city move forward with supporting a citywide sales tax due to the structural deficit and acting as neighboring cities who have already instituted them, have already done, such as Rancho Cordova at 1%. At the same moment, FCUSD is preparing to make a binding decision in early 2024 as to where to build new schools with Measure M funding. It's a question as to whether new schools will be built sorely needed by the district and specifically by the student population in Folsom, and will be built in Rio de Oro in Rancho Cordova or in Folsom Ranch here in Folsom. The city needs to recognize the importance of supporting that these new school facilities, a reasonable amount of them to support the student population, be built in Folsom Ranch as it relates to the health of the city budget moving forward. Parents will be pressed for time, and the proposed facilities in Rio de Oro are right next to Costco, meaning people will pick up their groceries at Costco in Rancho Cordova, not in Folsom. When they have school fundraisers, those school fundraisers will be in Rancho Cordova, they will not be in Folsom. When parents are going to get discounts at a local Dick's or other store, they will buy them in Rancho Cordova, not Folsom. This will have an impact on the city sales tax proposal. Further, the city receives 36% for the upcoming year of their total budget revenue from property tax. Folsom is a desired community due to parents enrolling their children in Folsom schools specifically. Folsom Ranch has skyrocketing property values, and this change of moving huge portions, 85% of all students in SFID3 live in Folsom, 15% live in Rancho Cordova, would result in damage to our property values. It would result in the area not being as desirable and asking our children to be bused for seven years of their K-12 academic career, well outside of the city. I'm asking the city to support us in the upcoming facilities meetings in January and in the spring, to just ask them to look at alternative proposals, to please focus on student need, not on aspirational schools that are going to exhaust and really challenge the north of 50, middle and elementary school, excuse me, middle and secondary schools. We just could really use your support and your commitment to show up for us in the New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional requests to speak? No? Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, your next item this evening then is scheduled presentation, item number one. This will be a presentation regarding the historic district shuttle program.
Can I ask for a few minutes' break?
Sure. Okay. Yep, we'll take a five-minute recess. Will the clerk please call the next roll? Will the clerk please call the next item?
Your next item is scheduled presentation, item number one. This is a presentation regarding the historic district shuttle program.
Good evening. Want to talk about something mundane?
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez. Good evening, council members and city manager, and actually the staff, because we're here to re, just give an update on the electric shuttles that we were granted money, and we want to share what we've done, we're kind of proud of it. So I'm Jim Snook, business owner and current FHDA president.
And I'm Karen Holmes, and I am the immediate past president of FHDA.
Welcome tonight.
And we'll keep this, this will be pretty quick. So you know how to run this, right?
I don't, but I'm going to guess like that.
Okay.
Use the arrow button, it works best.
I got it for you.
Oh, okay.
It's just transitioning, you're fine.
Okay.
There you go.
You're wrong. Okay. So our purpose in being here this evening, because we were granted this money for the shuttles, is to give you all an update on where we are, how the money's been spent, what kind of traction we're getting with these shuttles, and how, actually, it's succeeding. So we're very proud of that.
Yeah, so both of us were on that parking commission that the city had, and one of the items that was recommended out of that was some type of shuttle service because of the parking issues. And thankfully, we were granted this money, and we put together a great committee. We have Karen and myself, and we have the president of the Historic Folsom Residents' Association, Mike Reynolds, and then we have another historic Folsom resident, John Lane. And then we brought in the shuttle operators, the owner and his chief driver, as a team, a committee to put this all together. So that, we were granted money in April, and we worked diligently to try to get this operating as soon as we could, and we actually officially started in July of 2022. So by December, we actually were secured a shuttle app, a special app specifically for the district, which is super cool, and we have a just quick slide on that.
You got it.
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the ride-sharing app, Historic Folsom Shuttle. It's on the Google Play Store or the Apple Play Store, and it's specific to our zone. So we started out with just Sutter Street area and the lakes, shopping, and we've actually expanded it a little bit, and we'll we'll show why in a bit. But, you know, you can just pull up, and it's got all the businesses listed on the app. So basically, you pulled up, you say where you want to go, and then how many passengers, and request a ride, and it's usually super quick. Do you have anything to add on?
Yeah, one of the things that we're really proud of with this app is that we've been able to collect data, very, very real data, in real time. We started the shuttle in April, correct?
No, we started in July.
In July. And we started the app in December. So we had a few months where we didn't have data. The data has now been collected from December until this past October, which is what's current for this presentation.
Yeah. And so this is just a graph of the monthly ridership. So you can see back in December when we first started, and as it's climbed up, it shows us how many people rode the shuttle. it shows us how many people rode the shuttle. And as you can see, it continued to trend as more and more people found about, found out about it. And this is all data from that app. So it captures everything. It also captures, even if you don't use the app, if they flag down a person, they've literally, the drivers are great, they're like ambassadors. They've had times where they see a car circulating and they flag them and go, "Hey, are you looking for parking?" And they're like, "Yes." And they're like, "Go park over at the garage or park in RT and we'll pick you up." And then, of course, they click that they secured a rider. So that adds to the data. But one thing about that, I want to just point out about that graph. If you look at August, the last two months, there's a bump down and a bump up. And oh wait, we don't have October in there, do we? Some of that is, we have, okay, yeah, is because it depends when the Fridays and Saturdays fall. So the bump down had fewer Fridays and Saturdays. So that's why, because the actual numbers of ridership was higher, but we had two days less. So that's why it bumped down. And this is just that last graph broken out by month. And I don't, does it show? Yeah, you can see that pretty good. Shows actually the total rides that were given and how many riders and how many days were in the month. So like, for instance, the last two months, you see August had eight days down at the second to the bottom and then September had 10 days. So September bumped back up because we had two extra days. But what's really cool is if you look at the ridership, number of riders per day, that's a great, we've just seen the trend getting better and better.
So it only operates on Fridays and Saturdays, correct?
Only on Fridays and Saturdays. Our goal with the committee was to get this to last two years and we did that barely. We made it. We're scheduled to run out of funds at the end of June. So July 1st, which would be our two-year term, is when those granted funds will be eliminated.
Yep.
So this is cool. This is a heat map that we get out of the app. So it shows, it gives us a great idea where the hot spots are. And of course, the red is Sutter Street and then the red closest to the water is the Lake Ntoma Inn. So Lake Ntoma Inn, that's a big pickup spot. And then, as you can see, the drop-off spots, the most are in red. But this gave us, between what the drivers were telling us and you can see it, it actually goes up into the residences. They were getting a lot of people saying, "Hey, can you take me two blocks up?" And so they, we, that's when we expanded the boundary because it was limited. And if they were two blocks up, the app, you're outside the app and they can't call it. Maybe if they want to come down to the district without driving, this way it gave them that ability. And it goes actually as far as Red Bus Brewing. They had people up there that said, "Let's go down and get something to eat and they can call the shuttle and they can pick them up and bring them down." And also it expanded into, I think it's the Preserves across Folsom Boulevard. There's residents that requested back in there, but fewer.
Jim, I have a question.
Yes.
So with Lake Ntoma Inn, do the residents or do the visitors that are staying at the hotel, do they download the app and utilize it or do they utilize it without the app?
Some download the app, both. Some download the app, some people, the drivers have told us, they go, "We're only here for the weekend. We don't want to download the app." And so there's a number they call. So they can call the shuttle. But you know, we're trying as much as possible to get as many of the locals because every Friday and Saturday you get these cars looking for parking and the more they learn about this, you know, it'll help eliminate some of that circulation issue. And these are actually the drop-off locations. So once the shuttle is called for, these are the top spots. So number one is the Sutter Street Steakhouse, number one, probably the furthest from the garage. So that would be one where you're more apt to grab a shuttle. You know, if you're going to Hopseings or something, it's close to the garage. But Steakhouse, that's a little ways to walk, so especially if you're in heels. And then the second one is the Scott Seafood. So and then the third is the parking garage. So they're getting their rides back to the garage after their late-night ride. Yes.
I want to make one point about this that I think is really important is this is where the wallets are going. These people are getting on the shuttle and this is where they're ending up. And you can literally look at that and our data gets very, very deep. We can go much further back and really see it. But it is important to notice that we can see economic work right here. This shuttle is really, really helping in the historic district. Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, so we've had 10 months of the app use, actually a little more than that now. And we've had over 600 people download the app. I tell everybody, "Download the app. It's so quick and easy." It's a really fast download, actually. So we've got 10% of the rides right now originate from the app. A lot of it is, these guys are flagging people down, "Do you need a ride?" But that helps immensely because they're grabbing it and getting where they need to go. We've had 3,400, more than 3,400 rides that turns into 11,000 riders because you have groups of people. So there's days where I see it completely full of people. And so that's, the total number is over 11,000 so far, which is probably about 1,000 a month. So this is just the funding that we had our two-year goal and we actually were able to do that. One of our biggest struggles in getting this program put together, I have to say, was securing the insurance that the city required. We were striking out everywhere. Nobody, they, I think these shuttles are a little new and these insurance companies like, "We don't even deal with that." And in the middle of the night, the shuttle operator actually called us and said, "I found somebody." And it's not inexpensive, obviously, but we found it and we were able to get it going. So these are basically the numbers of what it costs to operate. This is average, we average the year. So the actual service hours, it runs average 5670 a month. The insurance is 1,000 a month. And then the ride-sharing app is 1334. That's how it plays out. So average is about 8,000 a month. And because of the app, we're able to find the peak hours. So they basically, what we're doing is the one, first shuttle shows up at 4:30 and then the second one comes at six o'clock. So then from 6:00 to 8:30, there's two shuttles. It's the peak time. Then the first one leaves at 8:30, so they're there 4:30 to 8:30. And the second ones there originally was 6:00 to 10:00, but we extended it to 10:30. And there's actually nights, if they're getting good tips, they stay later. And there's been nights when it's super busy and they're getting, giving rides till 11 o'clock at night. But, which is cool because we've had some of the people say, "I parked up the street and it was dark and it was, felt great to be able to hop on the shuttle and be personally delivered to my car and feel safe." So I thought that was a really good point. We've been looking for funding because we're going to run out in, by July 1st. We've had referrals to SACRT, SECOG, SMUD and we're looking into other, like the air quality management, FTA. But we're not experts at this. So we're looking for any kind of tips that the city can give us or avenues of where we can seek assistance to help keep this moving forward once we run out of funds.
I would probably say also maybe check with the county or county supervisor.
County supervisor?
See what, there are grants or there's funding somewhere.
Yes, so if any council members have some contacts, we would love that. So a couple of things that we're looking to the near future. We've got the Barley Barn getting ready to break ground, Uncle Charlie's and as well as 603 Sutter. So we've got some new things coming in, which is going to put even more pressure on the parking. So you know, we are just, we really feel strongly about this shuttle program and we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. When we were awarded this, we looked at each other like, "Oh my gosh." You know, we didn't know what to do at that point.
We're not shuttle operators.
Yeah. And with this great team, we were able to put this together and we met regularly and we still meet. And so it's just been a great experience for us. But we really feel strongly, if there's any way we can keep it going, it's that last mile of transit, people between RT and getting through the district, circulating people without driving cars around, I think is going to be huge. And I think that's it.
I have a question. Remind me again. Was this program created to help get people from, or remind me again, what was the objective when this program was initiated?
Yes. So the objective through the parking commission with, you know, the limited parking we have and we have this garage that has room in it, but people don't want to go, they want to park close to where they're going. And so people drive around looking for parking. And the goal was to get people to know, hey, on those peak nights, Fridays and Saturdays, park in the garage or park in those, those RT lots are empty at night. There's nothing there. And park and call the shuttle and then get to where you're going. And they're operating until 10:30 at night. So you know, there's plenty of opportunity to get your ride back and also to feel safe.
Yeah. So I do periodic drives around in the historic district on weekends at nights. And so there are a lot of cars in the garage on Friday and Saturday nights when I get off work or sometime into the like the midnight hour. Have we checked? I'm just curious. Are we seeing an uptick? Maybe Elaine, this is a question for Mark. Are we seeing an uptick of the usage through the data that we collect from the garage? I guess that's maybe a question for Mark and he's not here.
Yeah, we can, I don't have that data at my fingertips, but we can provide it to the council, track back and correlate it to the shuttle.
That's a great, I would love to learn more about that.
Yeah. Mark has a lot of data on, and so it would be interesting to see before, although I mean, there's pandemic for a while there, but before the carts came in and then during and then maybe now.
Yes, that'd be great. Good data. I can just give you an example. When I went to the Symphony event and some friends we invited said, "We'll pick you up." And so we drove down, I go, "Park in the RT lot." And we got, we went in there and there was zero cars there and it was a Saturday. And I called the shuttle and it was like 30 seconds and they came pulling up from the hotel and our friends were like, "Oh my gosh." They were totally impressed. I was actually a little shocked because it came so fast. Happened to be nearby me, but, and you can see the car, just like Uber, it shows them coming to you. So you know when to expect them. So that's a great feature because if it's raining, you're in your car and you're like, "Oh, here they come," and you can get out and flag them down, but.
So another observation is that they are super friendly. Like the drivers are so friendly.
Yes.
And what I love is that if people are walking, they will ask, "Would you like a ride to your car?" Like you can hear, you can hear. And what it does is it just creates a really neat customer service for people that are walking around, you know, in the evenings.
Well, and they are ambassadors for the district. And actually, they've reached out to businesses, "Please give us, you know, a little tidbit of about your business so we can share it." You know? And you can put it on the app, like you can put, like I have my business name, but I have just a quick little slogan under it. And so some businesses have done that. But they are very friendly and you know, their heart is in it too. You know, so they want to see it grow and be successful. They have a big investment in those shuttles. I know that Councilman Kozlowski has seen where they're stored. He has a beautiful indoor garage for these things. And you know, the other thing about this program is that the fees we're paying them for service includes the maintenance of them. So they agreed that, you know, if they need brakes or tires or anything, he has spare parts there. He says, "If a brake, if I need brakes, I have them." And he, they work on them themselves. So that was a big concern of ours, like, "Hey, this has to include the maintenance because, you know, we have limited funds." And so, and we were able to get it to last our goal of two years. So.
Anecdotally, people are getting trained to use those RT lots because I went to go have dinner at Fat Rabbit a couple of weeks ago and went to my usual parking space and I got the last parking space in the RT lot, which is incredibly unusual. But people are, you know, getting the hang of using those and then shuttling over to wherever they're heading.
And I would encourage anybody that's listening to get the app and just use it for fun, to try it. Because once you do it and you realize this was so simple and how fast they came, it actually, it just secures that, you know. Once you do it, the second time's easier, right? So I would just encourage anybody listening, get the app and use it for fun the first time. And then you'll want to use it from there out, especially if it fits limited parking.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
We inadvertently reinvented something that they did in San, something that they do in San Diego, which is real similar. And I learned a hilarious acronym from talking to somebody from down there. The similar shuttle service that they run in downtown San Diego, they refer to it as FRED, for free rides everywhere downtown. They also have a neighborhood shuttle, which is the one that I think that our grocery store businesses here in town should actually do on weekday afternoons to take people to and from Target and Walmart and Rayleigh's. They refer to it as FRAN, which is free rides around the neighborhood.
That's great. See, those little acronyms are great, you know. So anybody just getting them to have that ingrained in their mind, yeah. I mean, I could envision it, I mean, if we were able to get it to a point where when we have, you know, some of the big, big demands, maybe even shuttling them from like the Glen Light Rail Station in the evening when it's empty, you know, we could, it's not that far. And you know, he has, I think, four or five of these shuttles. I mean, he's, he picked up a couple that were at a car lot somewhere and he couldn't pass it up. But we have ours and, you know, I've supported it from the beginning. I told him, "Hey, I want to advertise. I want to support this thing." And he does have some advertisers. He's in the process right now, you know, how advertising is, getting the collection of, for their space. But you know, I could see it as, you know, businesses having a little more demand for it once they, as they get taken more. Anything else? I know you've had a long day, not a long night.
It's, we just started too.
Yeah.
The numbers are very impressive.
They are.
Thank you for pulling that together. And Mike and I was talking to SACRT also. We all will do at our willpower to get some recommendations to those state grants, county grants, you know, wherever we can get, SMUD and everybody, right? June is coming. It's around the corner.
I know.
Now people already tasted the FRED, right, the free ride? What's Plan B, right? I know our finance director is going to share very soon, she's going to show us again the red numbers for city of Folsom. Right? While we are working with citizens and, you know, council as a tax thing, that's a separate thing. But none of them are going to help you in June, six, seven months from now, immediately. So the numbers, Karen said very nicely, you know, where the wallets are going, right? The people, is there a hybrid thing you guys are already thinking? I just want to put that thought in you guys.
Julie, that's the subject of our next meeting.
Next meeting? Yeah. Yeah. In every power, we are going to try. In fact, Mike and I was sitting, you know, with SACRT, we already put some bug already, right? So how far that is going to go? Don't know, but we will push because we want that to be more successful. That way the historic businesses are going to flourish and the name goes out more, right? Traffic has been the thing before, but this is a solution for us. And we don't have the deep pockets also for $20 million for another parking structure on the other side.
We know.
Right? This is a sweet solution for now, at least for, you know, next several years. So I'll try to be there in the next meeting, you know, just to listen in. That way, when we speak to the outside world like SMUD and all those, no, no, they are chipping in or they are trying also to flourish as well together.
Okay, well, we'll let you know because we meet at the operator's residence in, off Sibley Street. In his garage.
And Jim, just really quick, are any PBIT funds used on the shuttle?
No.
No? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And the P for funds are very limited. I mean, we basically expanded upon it with some of the events like we just did Spirit Sprues and Bites, which brings us some extra revenue to help do other things. But yeah, the the PBIT, no, we don't spend anything on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
The maybe the last point that I'd love to make is that this shuttle, let me start again. Folks coming down to the historic district on evenings when our parking is so impacted and they're circling and circling, circling, trying to get where they're going. There's a negative perception there. And what the shuttle has done in part is give us an option, something to say to them that you don't have to live that frustrated moment.
Yeah.
Go park down here and call the shuttle. And so we now have a very positive alternative to be able to give visitors and residents for ways to get around the district, which is helping a great deal.
So Karen, just as some feedback, there are a lot of people that don't know about the shuttle. And so when people come down, they will continue to look for parking and then they say, oh, you know, they'll some people find it easy, other people don't find it depending on what's going on. But then you hear they we tell them, well, go park in the garage and use the shuttle. And they're like, what shuttle? So I I don't, that's an opportunity for marketing that.
And I do understand that. We we have, I won't say quietly marketed, but we have marketed within the district itself. Every business has that QR code. We have given QR codes to some of the bigger restaurants that are handing out checks at the end of the night, download this this app, the shuttle app. Absolutely. Could outreach be better? I'm sure it could. But for the short moment that we've been alive and at this, I think we're doing an admirable job.
That's great.
Yeah.
I agree.
We've done the social media posts. Actually, the city had it in the newsletter for us. So we've had some of that type of outreach, the, you know, images of it and stuff. So thank you again. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Yeah, your next item is scheduled presentation, item number two. This is the city manager's fiscal year 2223 fourth quarter and fiscal year 2324 first quarter financial reports.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I'm Stacy Tamaney, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight I have the unaudited results of the fiscal year 2223. And then the first financial update for fiscal year 2324, and that's for the first quarter, July through September. So first we'll start with the 2223 unaudited year end results. We're currently going through the audit right now. We had the final budget of $104 million and we have our unaudited figures there in the right hand column. We expect the total revenues will be at about 111 million. And you're over budget for a couple of things there. ARPA revenue is applied to that. So that was about 2.5 million dollars. You have charges for services and building permit revenue up above budget and that's in community development as they continue to process those for the plan area. And then you also were over a little bit in property tax and we had been reporting that throughout the quarters. And so that's, that's what got you over budget there in your revenue side. We expect total expenditures to be at 107.5 million. Expenditures had been projected to come in higher than that. And so I have this next line here. This is your change in your restricted fund balance or assigned for approved capital purchases. And what's happened at the end of the fiscal year is that we have encumbrances. Encumbrances are expenses that the council approved during the year, but the money didn't go out by the end of the year. So usually we have about $2 million of just regular contracts that that haven't finished by the end of the fiscal year. This year, however, you have a couple of big ticket items and that's why you're seeing a large amount. You had four ambulances that haven't been paid for yet. You have a fire engine that hasn't been delivered. You also have the fuel tank project for the courtyard, not completed, but those funds need to be reserved. And then we have about a million dollars in SPIFT impact fees that come into the city for city projects that roll into the general fund and that has to be restricted. So that's giving you the the $4 million there. So we thought that some of those expenses would was come in by the end of the year, but they haven't. So they'll be restricted. So the unassigned fund balance, when I had given the last quarterly report, we projected we have a shortfall of about $600,000. And now with the the results we have here, including the restriction of the 4 million, gives you a shortfall of about $300,000. And that'll bring your unassigned fund balance down from the $23.3 million that we had at the end of fiscal year 2122, down to 22.96 million. And as a percentage of expenditures, that's 21.36%. So then moving into fiscal year 2324, we're one quarter in so far. And so based on the data we have at this point, we expect revenues to come in at about 110 million and expenditures to be just at about 110. At this point, we have $40,000 of ARPA funds that we will be adding in. Those are, those have been expended so far. And so that gives you a total change in your fund balance of about $77,000. That would bring your unassigned fund balance up to 23 million. But as a percentage of expenditures, it actually comes down because as your expenditures are going up, you need to be adding to fund balance at that same level if you want to keep your fund balance at the same percentage. So it brings it down to 20.93%. When we look at the unassigned fund balance graphically, you've seen this many times. We were trending up as we headed out of the Great Recession. That was from fiscal year 13 to fiscal year 19. And just a reminder, and it's off the the chart now, but back before the Great Recession, we were as high as 26%. And that was in 2006 before the downturn. And having that level of reserves was how the city got through the recession. We were able to get back to about 20% of expenditures in fiscal year 19. And then we used fund balance to manage the impacts of COVID-19 in fiscal year 20. So now you see the recovery in fiscal year 21 and 22, and it's just remaining flat as we move forward into fiscal year 23 and 24. And we have that projected fund balance of 23 million and that slight dip down to 20.93% of expenditures. Looking at your general fund revenue for this this current year that we're in, we have the projections, as I mentioned, of 110 million dollars. And I'll go through the major categories here. We haven't received any property tax at this time. We don't get it until later in the year. So we expect that to come in at budget at about 40 million. Sales tax is projected to be slightly below budget at about 28.5 million. We just had our quarterly meeting with the sales tax consultant and they let us know that their projection for the year is for it to be flat with 2223. So 2223's result was 28.1 million. So we're being a little bit optimistic here and projecting a little bit above that, but it's still less than what we had budgeted by about $800,000. Transit and occupancy tax is expected to come in at budget. We have charges for services expected to come in at about $800,000 over budget. And this is directly related to revenue coming in in community development for plan check and inspection fees. And you'll see an offsetting projection of expenses going up because as those services increase and the revenue increases, we have to provide the services and so the contracted expenditures also go up. And that's the same case for licenses, permits and BLF. We're expecting to be up by about $750,000 for building permits. But then we have outside consultants to to do those inspections. And so it's it's a wash. A little bit of good news, all other revenue, we expect to be up a little bit by about $187,000. And that's mostly due to to interest revenue being up. So our our portfolio is starting to turn over and have the higher interest rates and so earning a little bit more on our money. The next slide here is the sales tax revenue trend. I've put this chart up quite often. But we're just seeing now, I think the first time I did it was in 2021 and we're seeing now 2122, 2223, 2324 staying on that lower trajectory. Our sales tax consultants project very moderate increases as we continue to go forward, about two to two and a half percent growth. And so what we've mentioned is that this is the issue of our expenditures growing faster than what our sales tax is currently doing. This next slide here is provided by our sales tax consultant. We use Avenue Insights. And it shows the annual per capita sales tax for Folsom, and this is adjusted for inflation. So we get this chart every quarter, but it's it's for the year is what we're seeing here. So back in the first column for 2019 through quarter two, per annual per capita sales tax was $294. And what we're seeing is we've moved along now in fiscal year 2023, per capita annual sales tax is $269. So we received the question, you know, the population is growing. We should be seeing a bigger increase in our sales tax, but what's happening is that people are generally spending less of their discretionary income on taxable items. And this is what this chart is showing. Back in 2019, $294 per capita. Now we're down to 269. So even though the population is growing, if people are spending less, we do have an increase in sales tax, but it's not the increase you would expect if people were continuing to spend at a higher level. Moving on to projected expenditures for fiscal year 2324. We have the current budget and then the projection. We're projecting to be in total about $872,000 over budget. The first item there is salary and benefits. We're projecting to be under budget by about $488,000 at the end of the year. This is mostly due to salary savings in the police department. They've had officer vacancies for the first part of the year. And those are expected to be filled by January. So we'll just have savings for this this first half. You'll also note, though, that we're not expecting to be over budget for fire overtime this year. That's due to being overstaffed in the fire department. We had hired the positions that are preparing for the new fire station. And so being overstaffed, that's covering the overtime. And so you're not seeing that big overtime over budget that we we usually see year to year. However, when the fire station.
Can you repeat that three times, please?
When the fire station is staffed, though.
Then we're right back to all kinds of overtime? I'm sorry. I'm slowing your roll here. I I just wanted to really land on the point because we had a debate about whether overstaffing eliminates overtime and people were like scratching their heads about how could that possibly be? And Councilman Chalum Sherrill and I kept saying it has to work that way. And it's glad, I'm glad to see that it has worked out that way.
If we could keep things just like they are right now, not open Fire Station 34, then it would stay.
I'm just saying there is a sweet spot.
It worked. Yeah.
We'll talk with Chief Kasana later. Thank you.
Sure. And so the second line there is operations and maintenance. And that is the offset to the increased revenue that we just talked about for community development. So as their permits go up and their inspection and plan sheet check fees, the revenue goes up. Then we're paying for those outside consultants to do the work that those permits paid for. And this is budgeted in part, just not to the extent that we've seen in the last few years. And so we don't want it to go up and down. So we just follow it very closely. If revenues are over, then the expenditures are allowed to continue for those services that that revenue paid for. For your enterprise funds, since we're so early in the year, I didn't do specific slides for them. They're all projected to end the fiscal year with operating revenue exceeding expenses. And your working capital, which is what we call the reserves in an enterprise fund, is in good shape for all of these as we move forward. And then the last slide here, you have your risk management fund. That's your internal service fund. That's used to account for the cost of the city's insurance programs. So we have medical, dental, vision insurance, workers' compensation and liability insurance for the city, all in this fund. So for the past few few years, we had used the reserves in here on purpose. It was planned so that we could keep these expenditures in the general fund flat. And that was to help us just get through COVID-19 and also as we've moved into this structural deficit situation that we're we're moving into now. But what we're seeing, as you can see, for fiscal year 1920, we were at $9 million for the unrestricted net position. And we're projecting by the end of this fiscal year to be down to 3.7 million. Just in this fiscal year, it's it's going to be a million dollar use of the net position. We had Kaiser premiums come in with a 25% increase. So that was much higher than we had expected. We had budgeted an increase, but we had been in maybe 12% and it came in at 25%. If this continues, it's very quickly going to deplete this fund. And so we're going to need to have the general fund then take on these costs. And that'll that'll be big increases every year for all of these increasing insurance costs.
And we're seeing those insurance costs, not just in the healthcare, but in other sectors of.
Correct, in liability insurance and in workers' compensation. Yeah, I was just pointing out the biggest increase was in in our Kaiser increase. So that's the data that I have for you, just future financial topics that will be coming to the city council on December 12th. I plan to bring an item on the city's general fund unaside fund balance reserve policy for discussion and direction to staff. And then in February, that'll be your quarter two report, and that will include the final audited results for fiscal year 2223.
Thank you, Stacy.
Can I ask one question? Or I vaguely recall you describing this to us previously. Are we part of an insurance co-op of sorts for health insurance where Kaiser, for instance, is charging us a rate that was negotiated by some larger group, not just us? I I and I use negotiate in the loosest way because they demand, they don't really negotiate, but do we have some wider collective of cities that could push back?
I don't believe that that's how it works.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Councilmember Kozlowski, I know that, you know, we do work with basically a, you know, a broker, for lack of a better term, to negotiate the best rates possible, but I can get more information for you on that.
Okay. I, this is a long-term structural problem for the insurance industry that, for all industries with insurance. There isn't really negotiating going on. There's just taxing going on. But okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
Stacy, you might have said CalPERS, how it is doing this season. CalPERS is going up, our stains.
For for this fiscal year, it stayed pretty much the same because we're we're going to two years behind. So they had a good year. So we expect in this next budget is when we'll see the increase to CalPERS based on the investment loss that they had now two budget years before.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. A couple of questions.
Oh. You want to?
Can I?
Yeah.
Okay. Stacy, if you don't mind, go to two, page two. Thank you. Yeah, here we see, you know, this is this is at the end, we are standing at 111 million dollars. And the expenditures are also going up. In fact, we have to add these two together. So it's almost break even. So this, there is a jump from, you know, here to here. It's about five, six million dollars, seven million dollars. Do we see the similar way in on page, slide three? Yeah, here, right? How that is, do you do you project that kind of thing?
That is possible because what we're seeing is we have, so we have the ARPA funding. It's not budgeted. It's set aside. And so when we spend it, the expenditures go up over budget. But then the revenues do as well. So that so they both kind of grow together. We also have the situation in community development where if the building permit revenue comes in higher, then the expenditures are coming in higher. So in total, you know, you're pretty close to being equal, which is what the budget was intended to be, a balanced budget.
Got it.
But because of those two big categories, it's it's boosting it up over the original budget.
Happy to hear that. Otherwise, you know, the bottom one is going up and the top one because of the sales tax or some other reasons. And that's where we are going to be bleeding in more, right? So, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Oh, I have some questions.
Oh, sure.
So on, I don't think it was in your presentation, but on page two of our agenda packet, the operating revenues, I have a question about the sales tax, kind of how it's presented here and it's different up there. So you said in your in your verbiage, that the first quarter exceeded last year's first quarter by eight, over almost nine percent. And it was $173,000 in sales tax that we, is that what you mean by the 173,000? That's how much sales tax we had or that's how much over?
That's how much it was over.
Of course, it's millions. I'm sorry. So, I mean, if you calculated that, I mean, this isn't the best quarter usually for sales tax anyways. But if you calculated that as a factual number, right, by four quarters, that number would be 692,000, yet you projected by the end of the year, we would only go up 352,000.
Yeah, so we do have our consultant help us with this. Part of the, not issue, but kind of complication with the first quarter report is what we've received in sales tax so far is two estimates from the state. And then we get the true up that comes in a month later. So we don't even have our whole first quarter results for actuals. So they they do the estimates. So as far as. So as far as kind of, um, comparing the first quarter of last year to the first quarter of this year and then extrapolating it out to be the total for the end of the year. I, I, that's not a very accurate way, in my opinion, to, to do that.
Well, go ahead.
Just, just because they're, they're estimates from the state and then we get the true up. So when we see the true up, then that's when I have a little bit more information to see, okay, the, the sales tax consultant said we'd be at, let's say, $3 million by the end of the quarter. The true up is now saying that we're at 3.2. Way good. Then I know at least we're probably going to be at least $200,000 over the total budget for the year.
Okay. Um, I think the thing you said that is, you know, all of our estimating projection is never going to be 100% accurate, right? So we're kind of, you know, manipulating and playing with money. I'm not playing with money, but you know, just trying to guess at it, right? And what we can know is factuals, we look at the past and you look at what, um, this, this sounds like the state and the county told you. So it's a flexible number in reality, right? It's going to keep changing. You're going to predict it's going to be 360, but it's going to be 380, for example, that kind of thing.
Throughout the year, as we get more information, it'll get more accurate.
So then my next question is, um, so on the expenses. Now you, um, wrote that there was 680,000 in more revenue that the community development department brought in. Um, and that does offset the 1.359 million, um, of, oh, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong, the 1.353 million, um, for community development. What, what, what am I missing after that?
The licenses and permits is the next category. So they bring in charges for services and then also, whoops, sorry, building permits. So when those are combined, then that's offset by the increased expenditures.
So the license and permit fees and vehicle license fees are?
It's all in one category for reporting purposes. So included in licenses and permits and vehicle license fees as a big category, included in there is, is billing permits. There's also a lot of other revenue that's in there.
So the vehi, how much is the vehicle license fees of that portion?
That's about $8 million in total, but that's not expected to be over or under.
How much is it for this quarter? Because you, you did the license and permit fees and vehicle license fees together, um, equalling 751. So how mu, what portion of that? I don't have to have it down to the penny, but what portion of that is vehicle license fees?
I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question, but the, the paragraph here says that the license and permit fees and the vehicle license fees together over the last quarter increased by 751,000. So you're asking, was it building permits that increased by 751,000? Most of it was actually business licenses. We had a big portion of the business licenses that were, uh, they had been, um, didn't have to be paid during COVID. And so we had an increase in the business licenses this year. And then we also had an increase in the billing permit fee. So it's probably about half and half. And I could get you the exact number. I don't have that on the.
So, no, that's great. I, half and half is great. Um, so you, most of that is, well, you, most of it, then you went to half and half is, uh, business licensing. So, um, so where, where am I missing? What are we not, um, what am I missing in the budget that maybe the community development is over $300,000 in expenses? That where they're not bringing in revenue to over, over compensate for that? I understand business licenses come through the community development, but I also wouldn't think that that permitting means you've got a planner and, you know, that, that's a lot of cost. Attached to that, but, um, so what am I missing that?
Well, I think there's two, because the numbers are kind of similar, I think we're talking about two different things here. So the first part was saying that the license fees and vehicle license fees quarter to quarter had a variance. So that's just what actually happened. But we're also looking at the building permit revenue, what we think the end of the year is going to be. And we think that the revenue is going to be over budget by whatever I had on that slide, um, by 754,000 dollars. So the over budget part is related to primarily community development only. The, the business licenses, we budgeted for that. It just is a difference from what happened quarter one to quarter one. The comparable is different, but that's not causing an increase in what we think the end of the year is going to be. So the numbers are similar, maybe that's where you're getting confused. So quarter to quarter increased by 751,000. That's one separate number. But the projection for the end of the year is that basically billing permits will be over budget by 754,000 dollars. So they're different, they're similar numbers, but, but different.
So the revenue is going to be more, but the expenses are going to be even more?
The expenses will be equal. So the, you have to add, um, so on this slide, the charges for services being over budget by about $800,000. That relates to one specific contract that we really, that we pay for in the plan area. That's for the infrastructure inspections. So we, we think that the expenses will be up by that much and we have revenue up by about that much in charges for services. Then you have billing permit revenue in the, in this line coming up over budget by 750,000 dollars. And you have expenses for inspectors that are doing the building permit inspections. And Pam, correct me if I'm incorrect on this, basically, and plan checks and, and things like that, that those building permits paid for being over by that same amount. So it's a wash between the increase in revenue and the increase in expenditures.
So, I mean, I understand the wash part of it, um, but the numbers aren't numbering for me. So maybe you can just follow up later and kind of break that down. So I can really see that the 1.3 isn't us not holding our, you know, and it's not department related, just kind of the process. Our city accountable to what we passed in the budget. So, um, if you don't mind giving, following me up and giving those numbers later.
Sure, but, and, but I can show you right here too. That it's the eight, the $810,000 plus the 754,000 dollars basically equals this 1.3 million dollars right here.
Okay. I can wrap my mind around that later then, but thank you for answering my questions. Um, there is one thing I'm hoping that this council is willing to talk about. Um, so the, I think the only question I have on you on this part is the, um, police are projected to be 389,000 in, um, under budget. And that is, I believe you said salary savings, is that correct?
From vacant positions.
Right. Um, so in light of, you could probably sit down for this one, but in light of, um, you know, the conversations we had on October 10th. Um, the conversations also on October 24th. I'd like to talk about, um, using those salary savings and getting our, and, and some other things, um, that we've talked about in the past. But getting our police some, some help right now. Um, you know, um, our community, we were all here. Our community was pretty much painted a really clear picture that their number one priority was public safety. And, um, you know, you heard all the people speak and how passionate they were, um, and how much they wanted us to listen. Um, we heard triplet just, uh, Officer Triplet just, um, before, uh, goodness, it was kind of at the beginning of our business from the floor. State that there's an invasion of transients in our parks and cities. Um, we just had an armed robbery, um, near, uh, where all of us shop, eat and dine, eat and dine and visit. Um, and it was brutal. I mean, it was, it was, it was not great. They came into the intersection. It wasn't just Pilario or the outlet malls. So our representatives had demanded us to do something and I want to at least talk about it right now as we're talking about the budget. So if, if, and I know that there's solutions. Um, you know, we're tasked up here to really listen. Our staff is tasked as well to really listen, um, and then come up for solutions at any time of the year. So, you know, I wanted to ask if I could ask, if I could ask, um, the chief of police some questions about maybe some of those solutions so we can start talking about that. Is that okay?
Yeah. Chief Hillman, you want to come up?
Thank you.
Sorry, chief. Um, so I'm, you know, I'm curious, um, how close are you to fully being staffed right now? Because I think back in the spring, it was like six to eight, we had to, you still needed to fill, fill.
Sure, we hope to be fully, uh, staffed by January. We have two openings and we have people in backgrounds right now for those two openings. We have two people that we plan to send to the academy in December, uh, and then we have two people in the academy right now. So if everything works out, we'll be at full staffing by January.
So that's, that's awesome. Um, if we don't give you more officers, what did, what would be the cost of that right now? I mean, if you don't get more resources and help with, and can you tell us about the increased crime? I know we had an email yesterday asking those questions about our increased crime theft.
Sure, that was the email from Mr. Patterson, I think, that, uh, was sent. And I looked up some information today, spoke with our crime analyst. We've had an increase in calls for service crime. One of the biggest things is our organized retail theft. That was up by 20% last year and is expected to be about 30% closing out the year this year. We.
Thirty percent, thirty percent of what?
Thirty percent increase in just the organized retail theft.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, other crime is expected just to go up, but it's probably within 10%. Is the crime, the, the crime analyst said, told me today. So I think I provided all of you with information about our calls for service going up and things are just, uh, it's, it just is what it is. We'll, we'll respond to calls, but it's, uh, it just takes us longer to get to calls because there's more calls that are happening.
How, how much of the calls for service go up? Do you know that? Either percentage or?
Uh, year to date, we're about 5,000 more calls for service than last year at this time. So last year we had, I think, 31,000 calls for service around this time last year. And I think we're at 36,000 calls for service this year.
So if, if we, if we wait till next year, the budget season, so, you know, we wouldn't fund anything until the end of June. You know, what, what is the results of kind of waiting? What do you see? I know you can't predict it, kind of like we can't always predict our numbers either. But what do you see happening from now until then?
Uh, I just, uh, I guess status quo, um, no changes, no, uh, improvements anywhere. Just, uh, I know the homeless issue was something that was brought up by the community and that was a big concern. It's been a big concern of all of us. I've worked with city manager to try to find solutions. But we also have other issues that are affecting the community. Organized retail theft is one of those, as well as just other thefts in general and traffic related problems. As you know, in the past 30 days, we've had, uh, three, maybe four fatalities. So we're just doing what we can to, to, um, continue to protect the community, respond to calls in a timely manner. And do what we can to thoroughly investigate and, and hold people accountable. It's, um, we're doing what we can with our staffing, no matter what that staffing is.
Chief, I have a question. So are we seeing that Folsom is uniquely seeing an increase of crime in comparison to, say, the region? Or is it, or are these crimes of opportunity that are happening in the middle of the night to businesses? Is that something that's just been sort of, because I know it's happened throughout the, um, county for a long time. And we really didn't hear about it in Folsom. And now we're hearing, you know, businesses that are just breaking into businesses in the middle of the night and, you know, take, trying to take off with the register.
We've always had those occur. We've always had burglaries occurring at businesses in the middle of the night. It's just that, uh, people hadn't gone to social media to post about that. But we've handled those all the time. Where our thefts are happening is at our retail establishments where it's just, it's constant. It's a constant flow. Businesses don't call us all the time. Target, for instance, has a $250 policy if you can steal that much and, and, uh, they won't call the police for that. They don't want to bother us because it's happening too frequently. So it's not a, it's not something that's unique to Folsom. It took a while for crime to get here when the passage of Proposition 47 occurred several years ago. We were kind of immune for quite some time. But over the past few years, we've been seeing this steady increase. It dropped a little bit during COVID and now it's up to pre-COVID numbers and increasing from there.
Chief, I have a question about the organized retail theft. I, I think in the past month or two, some grants were awarded. I think the city of Citrus Heights got over $2 million to combat that. As I understand it, we applied and got nothing.
Yes.
And so is it, uh, they have a higher rate of organized retail theft, their demographics are different than our dem, I mean, do they give you a reason why we didn't qualify for anything?
We used a company to help us out with that grant writing because we don't have anybody to write grants. Uh, so we used a company. And from what I was told by one of the vendors that we were looking at for a certain program, uh, that the agencies that use that company for the grant writing, it's called, uh, Lexible, was, uh, many of them were unsuccessful. And I know that I've compared crime and, uh, to populations trying to get similar like cities. And there are cities that were awarded grants that have less crime. The grants were mostly awarded to agencies that were going to start a, uh, real-time crime center or information center.
So what do you recommend? Did you want to ask first, Mike?
Yeah, I, kind of back to the staffing thing I was talking about with the fire department. What, what do you anticipate your kind of rate of attrition will be over the next 12 or 18 months in terms of retirements? Or just, you know, people heading off for other employment for one reason or another? Because I know that, you know, when we've had academies and things like that, not everybody ends up staying for the long haul, so.
Sure. Which, which. And I don't want to jinx that because we do have a couple of people in training still.
Knock on wood, I want them to all stay.
Everybody is, is doing well.
What's, what's typical, I guess, is all?
Usually about a third of our trainees pass training.
Yeah.
We put three people through the last academy that graduated in July. They've all done really well. So we've broken those odds. And we've done good with that, I, I should say. Uh, and we're hopeful for the others that we're getting. We're hearing good things about them in the academy. Uh, we know that there's going to be some people retiring, um, in early 2024.
Okay.
Uh, to late 20,000, uh, 24.
And now, Mayor, if I may just remind the council, the item tonight is financial report, not the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I will.
This also isn't an action item or direction of staff?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that council can take action, uh, can make a motion at any time.
It, it depends. Uh, that's a really good question, Councilmember Robal. The council can make a, uh, a, a motion on a, a genized item. If it's not, if it's not agendized, then no action can be taken.
So if we're, we're talking about the budget quarterly report, so I'm speaking to the revenue and the under budget item.
You, you can talk about those items, but there, there can be no action taken.
Okay.
You can ask questions just, just like you have, but I want to make sure that the council is refocused into, to this particular item. And that is the financial report, not staffing, not the budget.
Thank you. I'll try to stay on track. All right, any other comments? Questions? Okay.
You have more questions for chief?
Um, go ahead.
No, no, do you have, you want to?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Okay, well, will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, moving right along, we are getting to the consent calendar where you do have requests to pull item number four.
I can move adoption of items three, five, six, seven, eight and nine.
Second.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, your, um, councilmember Ziquino.
Yes.
Chalum Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay, item number four is resolution number 11123. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant and professional services agreement with Cosmont for economic development consulting services. You have three requests to speak on this item. Okay. Okay, your first speaker will be Mike Reynolds, who I think I saw leave.
I think I saw him leave too.
So you have two speakers on this item. First will be Bob Holderness, who will be followed by Bruce Klein. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening, Mayor Robert G. Holderness, appearing today on behalf of the Fed Corp. You know, with Mike not being here to give his pitch, it's a little hard for me to, uh, to engage.
No, other Mike.
Oh, other Mike. With Mike not being here, it's a little hard for me to engage. I don't have somebody to, to respond to, which is what I really was hoping to be able to do. But, but very simply, we've been doing things as evidenced by this contract in Folsom since the early 1990s. And, uh, we've done it in different ways. Originally, we had an executive from Intel who, on a pro bono publico basis, wrote a business plan for our economic development program in Folsom. His number one recommendation is that we have a private sector corporation or business entity to help implement the economic development program, which in fact, we've done. Uh, I think this program is a really good one to have Cosmont come forward and write a updated plan and do some implementation. updated plan and do some implementation for you under the budget allocation that you have. Cosmont is no stranger to the city of Folsom. They've worked for the private sector as well as the public sector in this, uh, community. Larry Cosmont is somebody that I worked with, I don't know, fifteen years ago or whenever it was. Uh, they're very professional. They know their stuff. They'll do a good job for you. I don't think that you need to in any way have the city council micromanage them in this sense of, uh, changing or adapting the resolution. It should be pretty generic. Uh, they know what to do. They know how to work with your city manager, and there'll be plenty of uh, items that they can come up with. And I have one to add to the, to the mix, and if I have a little bit of time left. And that is the shuttle. My client, Murray Weaver, has had a shuttle for about five years. You now know that FHDA's two shuttles cost about eight thousand dollars a month. What that means to me and rough numbers is that Murray is making a contribution to the public welfare of three or four thousand dollars a month, and he's been doing it for about five years. And kudos to him. It's a big help, and maybe Mr. Cosmont can help FHDA figure out how to self-fund that program so they don't have to come to you for eight thousand dollars a month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker will be Joe Galliardi, followed by Bruce Klein.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm here to actually support, uh, this. I sat on the selection committee with, uh, some of you on the dais. There could not be a bigger need for the city than having an economic development director or consultant, really kind of to direct the strategic efforts of economic development. The one thing about economic development that we should always remember is, is that it should pay for itself over time, that it actually generates money uh, for the city and for the community. Uh, Cosmont has a long history. Their, uh, their person on the ground is actually a Folsom citizen, had years of experience at the county of Sacramento and Clark Witten. So not only do we have a local person that's familiar with economic development, has done incredible projects in the county of Sacramento, but they also have the support of the Cosmont Company. Some of you heard him speak at, uh, our events before. Former city manager, uh, they've got a wide background, and I think, it would be a great addition to the community for us to implement this, and I'm looking forward to working with them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Bruce Klein.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bruce Klein, a thirty-three-year resident of Folsom. I'm the chair of the Folsom Residents Supporting Public Safety and Quality of Life Sales Tax Initiative. One of the questions that we get asked a lot, um, when we're talking to them about revenue in our town is what is the city doing to try to build the pie? This is one of those pieces that you can answer very directly to them. Um, I agree with, uh, with Joe that, and Bob, that, you know, you've done a robust search. You had a great committee. Uh, you've got a good scope of work. I thank you for bringing it forward. Um, the citizens want to know that. If we're going to be successful on our citizens' measure for a sales tax to try to bring revenue to the city, we want to be able to demonstrate across the board that we're doing more and more things to build that pie in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have no further requests to speak on this item.
I'll entertain a motion or question?
I'll move approval of resolution one-one-one-two-three.
I can second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalenchera.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, that takes you to your first of your two public hearings this evening. Item number ten is resolution number one-one-one-two-nine. This is a resolution adopting the November twenty-three adjustment for the Folsom Plan area-specific plan infrastructure fees and setting the updated amount of the SPIF fees.
Thank you. Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. This will be a, a quick presentation here. The SPIF program is the mechanism that equalizes the cost of the infrastructure, public lands, and community parkland in the Folsom Plan area among all of the developers there. This includes roadways, sewer facilities, potable water, recycled water, storm drain, habitat mitigation, and other costs. Um, this is the, the background of the program. I'm not going to go through this because we were just here in August talking about this, this same fee update. Um, this was requested in August to be done, um, by the, the landowners, the SPIF administrator, and the city so that we could update the construction cost estimates for this, the SPIF infrastructure fees. The adjustment alters the fee amounts based on these updated construction costs, and we also do a construction cost index increase every year, and that occurred on July first. After we brought the adjustment to the council in August for the August twenty-three update, the city's consultants identified additional eligible infrastructure costs that needed to be included in this program. And so those costs, if approved, will become effective January fifteen of two thousand twenty-four. And what that means is an increase, an additional increase of about two thousand dollars to thirty-eight hundred dollars per unit for residential uses. And for non-residential uses, between two dollars and fifty-eight cents to three dollars and thirty-eight cents per building square foot. And so with that, staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing and then adopt this resolution approving the updated adjustment to the SPIF fees and setting the updated amount of the SPIF fees.
Thank you, Stacy. Are there any questions from the council? No? Okay, then I will open up the public hearing.
You have no request to speak on this item.
All right, so I will now close the public hearing. Any other questions, uh, for staff?
I will move adoption of resolution number one-one-one-two-nine.
I second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalenchera.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, your second public hearing item tonight is item number eleven. This is regarding the ten-fourteen Sibley Street subdivision. You have an ordinance before you tonight, ordinance number thirteen forty, which is presented for introduction and first reading. And you have a second item, a resolution number one-one-one-two-two to approve a vesting tentative subdivision map, PD permit, design review application, a mitigated NEG deck and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the six-lot Sibley Street subdivision project.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Josh Kincaid, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight I'll be presenting the ten-fourteen Sibley Street subdivision project. Uh, the project's located on Sibley Street. Uh, closest major intersections are Lumbee Drive and Glenn Drive. Um, it's a point-eight-seven-acre rectangular, uh, site surrounded by single-family and multifamily uses. And the project is, uh, located outside of the, uh, the city's historic district. Here's some photos of the project site. It's a fairly flat site with, uh, several trees. Um, the structures on-site are all proposed to be demolished prior to recordation of the final map. Now, looking at the proposed rezone, uh, the project currently has split zoning, um, of residential multifamily and general apartment district. The general plan designation on the parcel is single-family high-density, which allows up to seven dwelling units per acre. Uh, the proposal here is to rezone the property to residential, single-family dwelling, small-lot district uh, with a planned development overlay. Uh, this would make for one type of zoning on the property, so we can apply one set of standards and would also allow for the single-family zoning in line with the single-family general plan designation uh, and the density. The proposed single-family development is compatible with existing land uses in the project area, and the rezoning would also not result in a net loss of density since the applicant is proposing to divide the parcel into six lots and, uh, have six accessory dwelling units, uh, up to six accessory dwelling units on these lots. Here we have the proposed vesting tentative subdivision map. The lots would be approximately seventy-two, seventy-two hundred square feet each. Uh, the applicant is required to, uh, deed the land encompassing the street, a future bike lane, curb, gutter, and sidewalk back to the city. All the necessary infrastructure is conditioned to be in place, and all necessary easements and rights-of-way will be dedicated in front of the lots prior to construction of the, the residences. Environmentally, an initial study was prepared for the project and found that it would not have a significant effect on the environment with, uh, standard construction conditions applied. Here we see the site plan. As shown, there will be a sidewalk connecting to the existing sidewalk to the, uh, south of the project site. The applicant proposes to construct a single-family, uh, unit with an accessory dwelling unit, an ADU, in the rear of each lot. You'll see three access points here to Sibley Street to avoid too many driveways, uh, for safety purposes. Each primary unit is, uh, between twenty-seven hundred and three thousand square feet with an attached two-car garage. Under the planned development permit, the applicant's proposing a reduced lot width uh, and side yard setbacks to allow for the site to be developed at the density allowed in the single-family high-density, uh, general plan designation. Um, there are about fifty trees on the project site. All are in fair-to-poor condition. According to the arborist report that was preliminary, preliminarily prepared for the, the project. As a result of the construction of the infrastructure and the buildings on the site, it is anticipated that the majority of the existing trees present on the site would need to be removed. Removal of the trees will be mitigated with a combination of onsite planting, um, of the required street tree and, uh, mitigation payment to the city's tree fund. Now, looking at the, uh, elevations of one of the proposed primary residences, uh, they're all two stories, uh, up to thirty feet in height. There are three total primary unit plans for the six lots. Uh, each of the different plans has a different roof pitch, building form, and accent materials. Uh, staff did work with the applicant to make sure that no two adjacent lots have the, the same house on them. And moving on, now we're looking at the, one of the proposed accessory dwelling units. Uh, they're twenty-five feet in height and will mirror the design of the primary residences. And they're subject to objective design standards regarding architectural features and neighbor privacy. Uh, staff recommended approval of, uh, of the project to the planning commission. Uh, um, at that meeting, two members of the public spoke about that project, one in support of the project and one that expressed some concern about the safety of cars going onto Sibley Street, additional cars. Ultimately, the commission, uh, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project after discussing the issues shown on the slide here to the, uh, city council. Uh, the commission instructed staff to work with the applicant to add a condition, uh, for council that the front yard landscaping does not block views of cars pulling out of the driveways, and we have added a, uh, condition, uh, number seventy-seven to reflect that. So with that, staff forwards the unanimous, um, planning commission recommendation uh, for approval of the project to city council as conditioned, uh, including the first reading of the ordinance for the rezone and the resolution for, uh, for the entitlements. Uh, staff notes that these approvals will not go into effect until, um, and no permits can be issued, I should say, until, uh, thirty days after the approval of the second reading, which we have tentatively scheduled for the twenty-eighth of this month. Uh, with that, I welcome any questions about the proposed project. We also have the environmental consultants, uh, here to answer any questions about CEQA as well.
All right, thank you, Josh. Excellent presentation. Any questions?
I have a couple. Could you go back to the, um, site plan?
Yeah.
What's, um, explain to me again what the, the gray area in front is? That's all pavement?
It is. Um, there are, uh,
Single driveways?
Yeah, there are driveways that are, uh, serving each of the residences. There's a little bit of, they're connected, so there's a little bit of room to kind of do a three-point turn and not have to back out on the Sibley Street essentially. They're, they're being designed in order to.
All right, and then there's no other flat work shown. How, what, what is the way that you actually access the cottages? You're walking down the side yard?
Correct.
Are there fences there as well?
Um, there certainly can be fences. There, there would be no, uh, building permit or planning entitlement for a fence.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions for Josh?
I'll piggyback on that real quick. So, so if you're living in the ADU, you're parking, I guess, either in the garage or on the driveway. Is there any street parking right there on Sibley or no?
There, there's a little bit of street parking, um, to the south of the project site. Um, there's none directly adjacent to the project site. A state law has, uh, made it so that required parking does not have to, for, for accessory dwelling units does not have to be met by covered parking. They can utilize the driveway to meet the single, um, parking space that's, that's needed. That's all.
And so, so these are for-sale units, so if I buy a, a unit, I'm getting the house and the ADU?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't, did it come up at the planning, I, I, I'm glad for the reduction in the number of curb cuts, but the amount of forecourt, like, parking space on the site seems unusual. Because if it were just a single driveway, there'd be a lot less pavement up there. Did that come up as a discussion point?
It, it did. Um, I think ultimately the, there was the desire not to want people to back into Sibley Street. You pull into these driveways and with Sibley being, you know,
I get that.
Thirty-five miles an hour here, I, I believe they.
Only thirty-five?
The limit. Um, there, there was, there was a desire to give a little extra space to, uh, to back up. They are meeting the forty percent uh, landscaping standard for the front yards.
Really?
Here, because there's that extra space in front of those driveways, uh, for landscaping, so a little unusual, uh, layout, but, but they are me, required to meet the forty percent standard and are showing it here as meeting it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Josh?
Yeah, it's the same one on the traffic. Whosoever is that one resident spoke about it.
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I like the way, mm, 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 our, my good friend Mike said, is only thirty-five on that? I, it's not the case, right? We all know that. Uh, and there are six ADUs and give or take one or two cars for that additional. There may be, you know, ten to twelve additional cars not going to be up there. And they park, pull over into the side, sides of the Sibley and forty miles. So I'm a little bit, you know, hesitant whether we have done thorough traffic analysis on that one.
Yes, I mean, the, the, uh, Community Development's Engineering Department in concert with the Public Works Department have reviewed this site plan and have, have signed off on it for safety purposes, preliminarily.
Josh, can you, can you confirm the, the law that went into effect a couple of years ago that it's within a certain, uh, certain, um, you know, I don't know.
Distance from public transit.
Distance from public transit. So I imagine it applies to these?
I, I believe it does not apply to these. I think this is just outside of the, the half-mile radius to not require parking. But the law does state that the parking required can be, it can be in an existing or proposed driveway. And so in this, in this case, we have the two-car garage, which would do the, uh, which would give the, the parking requirement for the primary structure, and then the driveway would technically be all that's required by the state or all that's allowed to, to, um, to require from the state for the additional parking space.
Thank you. Any other questions for Josh? No? Okay, I will now open the public hearing.
You have no request to speak under this item.
Okay, so I'll now close the public hearing. Any other questions for Josh?
I will move introduction.
Oh, just really quick, there have to be two different motions for that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will move the introduction and first reading of ordinance number one-three-four-zero.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalenchera.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Okay.
And then I will move adoption of resolution number one-one-one-two-two.
Second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalenchera.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes, uh, yes. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, your next item is old business number twelve. This is landmark tree designation. We're receiving the Urban Forester recommendations to establish two new landmark tree designations. Under this item, you have two sub-resolutions, resolution number one-one-one-three-zero regarding landmark tree designations for the native woodlands at the Folsom State Prison property at three-hundred Prison Road. And resolution number one-one-one-thirty-one, a resolution establishing landmark tree designations for native oaks within the city-owned segment of the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor. And Madam Mayor, you do have three requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the council. I'm Amy Nunez. I am your urban forester and city arborist. And I'm here this evening to bring forward, uh, return item from the September twelfth meeting. Um, as you recall, city council did request staff come back with two resolutions to estat, establish landmark trees. Uh, first at Folsom State Prison, and then secondly, along the Oak Parkway Trail Corridor. Okay, let's try, there we go. So, um, just a quick, um, recap for the audience on what a landmark tree is. A landmark tree is a tree recognized by the city council for being particularly remarkable for one of these four findings here on the screen: historical value, outstanding habitat, unusual species, or superior beauty. The registry was established in nineteen ninety-six. The registry was established in 1996, and in recent years, staff have endeavored to revive the program after dormancy of over two decades. So as far as how a tree winds up on the registry, there are two avenues. The first avenue is the traditional route where a tree owner submits an application with a fee and an arborist report. Alternately, and the avenue that we would be exploring here tonight with our two candidates would be option number two, which is city council on its own motion can initiate the process to establish landmark trees. And the benefit of having a landmark tree is the city will actually provide consulting services and even maintenance when deemed necessary on an annual basis at the request of the tree owner. And also very noteworthy for a landmark tree is that an application and declassification from the city council is required prior to the removal of the landmark tree. So on to our two candidates. Candidate number one is the expansive 250 acres of native oak woodlands on the Folsom State Prison property. Species distribution is primarily oak, but there are also some other native species like buckeye and elderberry, which are very important to contributing to some rich habitat. And with that, as far as findings for landmark tree status, we have historical value, which is pretty clear. A lot of these oak trees do predate the prison, which was built in the 1880s. Outstanding habitat value. I personally had the opportunity to tour those grounds, and we ran into deer, hawks. I was told that a bobcat makes its home in the woodlands, and then also oaks being a keystone species and home to more life organisms than any other tree genus in North America also contribute to that outstanding habitat value. And then superior beauty for sure. Regardless of any landmark tree formal designation, I think one cannot argue that these woodlands are their own natural monument for the state of Folsom. And then here are just some images demonstrating the vista.
And it definitely adds great value when you're walking on the Johnny Cash trail.
Oh, absolutely.
And you're walking up, it is just remarkable.
Yeah. And yeah, this photo in particular is a nice demonstration of just the beautiful view. So considerations for a landmark tree status, primarily owner consent is required. The California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation was very excited about the prospect of adding their woodlands onto our registry. They did submit a letter of support, which you will find in your packet as an attachment to the staff report. Applicable findings, which I mentioned, historical value, phenomenal habitat, and of course, the superior beauty. Financial impact to the city would just be the waiving of that $280 application fee and then the staff time to do holistic assessment of the Grove at CDCR's request. So that concludes candidate one. I will move on to candidate two if there aren't any questions. So I think it's safe to say we are familiar with candidate two. This is the Oak Parkway Trail corridor, the segment that is owned by the city, just shy of a mile and a half, spanning 49 acres. About 10 of those acres is canopyed. As far as findings go, habitat value, there are oaks, again, a keystone species, superior beauty. There are some very noteworthy handsome specimens along this corridor. And then also of note is unusual species. This corridor is home to a couple recorded oracle oaks, which are a rare hybrid between the California black oak and the interior live oak. Here are some images of the corridor that we're all familiar with. And then considerations for a landmark tree designation, since the city is the landowner, we don't need permission from ourselves. But we do have stakeholders, trail users, SMUD, and PG&E, who do possess utility easements along the corridor. And I think we all remember the drama of a few years past when PG&E did come in strong, one might argue antagonistic with alarming and unreasonable goals with removal. And in that vein, there are obvious utility and tree conflicts. We do have instances where we have trees directly under the lines, and that is a topic that comes up on an annual basis. Following the September 12th meeting and the direction from council to consider bringing back a resolution for a landmark tree status, staff did reach out to our stakeholders, SMUD and PG&E, to hopefully have them come to the table and meet with us to talk about the prospect of a landmark tree designation. SMUD was very eager to engage in conversation on that topic. They did express concerns with a resolution getting in the way of their mandatory commitment to safe operation of their facilities. PG&E had a similar message, though they did go about it in a different way at first. They were a little quick to have their legal counsel reach out to ours, and though they didn't want to meet with us on the topic, they expressed a very hard stance that they would not consider or acknowledge any resolution that potentially gets in the way of their vegetation management rights that they are regulated by under state and federal law. They would continue to work collaboratively with city staff on their annual vegetation management activities. And then throughout that back and forth and those conversations, there was a lot of conversation about superseding rights and what controls who. And ultimately, legal counsel on both sides, PG&E and ours, have come to a similar conclusion that our municipal code and policies ultimately do not control PG&E and their vegetation management commitments. So impact to the city, again, since we are the owners, we don't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't pay a fee to ourselves. The biggest impact to the city for this would just be the ongoing staff effort for maintaining and building the relationships with our stakeholders. So with that, staff recommends that council proceed with adopting resolution 11130, a resolution establishing landmark tree designations for the native woodlands on the Folsom State Prison property. And then also with input from community advocacy and direction from the council, staff also forwards for council consideration, resolution 11131, a resolution establishing landmark tree designations for the native oaks within the city-owned segment of the Oak Parkway Trail corridor. And I can take any questions.
I have a question. Okay, so, so the land is the city's, and there are trees that may interfere with PG&E or SMUD being able to do the work. And again, I'm going to go back to the summer of 2020, when one of the most beautiful oak trees, I think in my neighborhood, was taken down. And it changed the landscape of walking on the trail. I mean, it just, it changed it, and it looks so different. And so what about a partnership where in the event something like this is coming down the pike and a decision has to be made to remove a tree? Is that partnership there to create a communication, to be able to let us know when something like this would happen? And potential alternative methods to be able to maybe shave the tree down, or I don't know what the proper terminology is, but so that we don't have something like that? Because I look back at that tree, and of course, it's in my backyard, it's on the trail behind my housing development, but it was incredible. I mean, when you talk about superior beauty, it was a tree that far surpassed superior beauty because it was big and it was beautiful, and there could have been, there could have been an alternate plan instead of cutting it down. And so I'm looking for that partnership that will at least be able to have that communication of should something happen, can we be involved in that decision-making?
I do not disagree with you that that was a huge loss. That was an amazing tree. And staff at that time reached out to PG&E, calls, emails. We did get them to meet with us on site to voice our dismay at the loss of that gorgeous tree. At that time, PG&E was not interested in hearing us, and eventually, they stopped picking up my phone calls. The answer to your question is difficult because that tree was on their property. And to this day, they do maintain the stance that what they do on their property is their business. On the city-owned portion, a lot of positive progress has been made since the stirrup that happened a few years ago. And they do now, on an annual basis, submit to us in advance an annual work proposal, and they do give staff an opportunity to review those, the trees on their work scope and give them comments and voice concerns. And this year and last year, they have made concessions based on staff comment. But with regard to the portion that they owned, staff has not been very successful in getting them to come to the table. So it's...
I get, I get it. It's their land. They own it. But ultimately, we have an obligation to preserve as much nature as we can, and I think this is where PG&E really does need to come to the table and meet us halfway to be able to look at alternative methods to be able to preserve and protect those trees, even though it is on PG&E land. And so I get it, it's on their land, but ultimately, we have a responsibility to preserve these trees and...
I'll also mention that we do have a representative from PG&E here tonight, Jonice Foster Downs, and she did submit a card to speak, so perhaps she can also speak to that also.
Well, welcome to Folsom. And I have to admit, I was very pleased with the meeting we had a couple of months ago where the four of us, Elaine, you, and Jonice and I, sat down. And I left that meeting very encouraged that there is a willingness and a partnership that wants to happen. And so, and I even brought it back to council comments and shared that information. So it was, I left very encouraged that while, yes, the trees may sit on PG&E land, I think the communication that I got is they want to do the right thing, not just for, you know, just for nature, but just for the quality of life in the city of Folsom, and those trees give us a good quality of life. Okay, so...
Okay, our first speaker tonight will be Jonice Foster Downs, who will be followed by Bruce Klein, who will be followed by Julie Klein, who will then be followed by Robert
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jonice Foster Downs, local government relations for PG&E, and I wanted to say thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to make comments this evening on this resolution. You should have received a letter in your packet with comments that I made, and I just wanted to highlight a few of those, which will touch on our partnership with the city. First and foremost, we proudly provide service, gas service, to the city of Folsom, as well as maintain transmission electrical lines through the city. And we are committed to continuing to work directly with communities like the city of Folsom in maintaining and actually providing safe, reliable service to our communities. And as part of that commitment, two years ago, we spoke before this body, we met with the community, we walked this corridor to basically create a clean slate, because we've, as it was stated, we did start off to a bit of a rocky start, and we understand that. We wanted to create a clean slate and create a cooperative partnership with the city and moving forward to have, you know, more collaboration and communication with the city. Oops, I'm sorry. Moving forward with the city. Since then, we've established consistent dialogue with the city manager, the city arborist, and staff, and have worked really collaboratively with them to maintain the vegetation along the corridor. And at this point, we do feel that the resolution is, kind of creates an extra unnecessary layer of administration that counters the collaboration and partnership that we feel that we've established thus far. Our top priority is to provide safe, reliable service. In this charge, we are governed by the CPUC and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which is FERC, the Northern American Electrical Reliability Corporation, which is NERC, in maintaining these lines safely. We use best practices as guided by FERC and NERC in managing the vegetation along this corridor, as well as working with the city arborist. As she's mentioned, we submit our work plan, and as noted in your packet there, there was, we had presented trees to be removed, we've worked back, and we found other solutions. So when there are other options, we've worked with the city on that. And while we do respect the city wanting to enhance the tree designation, the landmark tree designation, ultimately, PG&E is solely responsible and accountable for maintaining these lines safely, and safety is critical, obviously. And we must manage those in accordance to NERC, FERC, and CPUC requirements. Getting, so that being said, we've, I believe we've created a collaborative partnership, our leadership, our bench management team, and I believe the city wants to continue moving that forward. So our request is that you don't move forward with the draft, with the resolution as drafted, without an exception for PG&E's vegetation management work.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker will be Bruce Klein, who will be followed by Julie Klein, who will be followed by Robert Goss.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me back again to talk about this important subject. Folsom is an innovative and creative and a problem-solving place. That's what we do all the time. I mean, we've done it, and we've seen the staff have to do it in these tight, tight, difficult budget times. This is a great opportunity. So I'm going to present at the end of my discussion, you know, a very innovative and potentially great solution to this deal. All of us are tired. I know Amy is really tired of dealing with this subject, and there's a lot of staff time that's been burned, there's a lot of community time that's been burned to deal with these trees, but these trees are super, super important. Our community in my area by Hancock, they had a community service project. I didn't even hear about the thing. In addition to that, there's other neighbors that are out there working around, in and around those trees to poodle them up, to do things necessary, because they really value Not addressed directly, but the item, of course, is the resolution, and absolutely, this resolution should be adopted. This has been a long time coming. The resolution does provide one extra level of protection, and we all know that, you know, the long history of comings and goings of staff and different people at the utility and different leaders in the utility, those things change. And this landmark tree status takes it the one step further and makes sure that, in fact, there has to be collaboration. I appreciate PG&E coming forward. I disagree with the proposed cuts that are out there. I've talked to Amy, I've talked to the residents whose houses are back up to the Oak Parkway corridor and who have these trees, these beautiful oak trees that are in the corridor that are slated for removal. So when Mr. Wilson was here, Joe Wilson, I think that was his last name with PG&E, talked, well, we screwed up the last time, we're going to come forward, we're going to do it right, we're going to do it different, you know, we're going to trim, and that year, you know, we went down from what, 28 trees that were going to be removed in different sections to we're going to trim them all. All of these trees can be trimmed. There is no question about it. The seven trees that are on this list all can be trimmed. They've been trimmed before. You can look at the trees. We walked the corridor, I looked at each one that had the hidden X behind it so the citizens can't see it. All of those have been trimmed before, and this year, we had great rain, and boy, those trees sprouted up, thank gosh. Because they, that also benefited the hatchet trees that PG&E cut down in the middle of the corridor.
Yeah, five seconds left.
Pardon me? Since I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of Folsom Parkway, if you can give me just a couple more minutes. I'm speaking rather than parade our whole group forward. So seven trees doesn't sound like a big deal. It is a big deal. Because when I walk that corridor and look, I go, well, okay, that tree next year will be higher. And that one will be the one that's on the chopping block. And that one, and that one, and that one. So when I look at all these trees out there, seven trees are a big deal. And PG&E's obligation, safety, 100% agree. But it, as we go back to what we talked about in 2021, it's the cut to the MVCD standard. So what I'm challenging the council to do is to say, let's approve this resolution. Let's say, we want you to cut these trees to the MVCD standard. We don't want you to remove them.
Bruce, you're going to have to wrap-
They're on our land. Last thing I'd say is, let's be innovative and creative. And use Friends of Folsom Parkway, use your Tree Fund money. Use Amy and Sacramento Tree Foundation, because you're going to approve that contract hopefully in a few minutes. And let's all be creative and work hand in hand with the utility. And I will guarantee you that next year, if you say, let's get a collaborative group with volunteers and using some tree money, we will come back next year and there will not be one conflict to report. When they do their LiDAR survey, every tree on that corridor will already be cut to MVCD standards using volunteer labor and some tree money. And we will not keep repeating this problem.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks.
Okay, your next speaker is Julie Klein, who will be followed by Robert Goss.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Julie Klein. And I reside in a home that backs up to the Oak Parkway corridor. And I'm here this evening requesting and asking for your support, support to adopt the resolution to establish the landmark status as written. In other words, not excluding PG&E. And also, I would just like to make a couple of comments about the oak trees that are planned to be removed. Unfortunately, I feel like this is a little bit of deja vu from 2021 in which PG&E made a commitment, really a strong commitment, to trim and prune as opposed to remove. And I feel as though every year, they're going to be coming to the city and requesting removal. Because it's obvious that it makes more sense from a cost measure to clear the corridor. Eventually, clearing the corridor would be ideal. But it's not ideal for Folsom. We really want to protect our oak trees. I think it's critical that we acknowledge that this cannot be an ongoing negotiation every year. So I really hope that you'll consider Bruce's proposal, which is really out of the box thinking. But somehow, we have to come to a consensus where we're not back at the table every year using staff time, trying to negotiate with PG&E about what tree should be removed, what one should not, what one should be pruned. Having walked the corridor, all seven trees, in my humble opinion, I'm not an arborist, probably could be trimmed and saved. Maybe the exception, having talked to Amy, the Valley Oak could be one exception. But I'm asking the council to consider directing staff to, to save all of our oak trees. We don't need to remove them, we can prune them, we can cut, we can trim and prune. So anyway, I appreciate Amy's efforts and working with PG&E. And certainly, she was accomplished a reduction in the number of trees to be cut. But I'm asking you to consider that we eliminate all cutting at this time and just prune and trim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Your last speaker on this item is Robert Goss.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the city council. Robert Goss, on behalf of the Friends of Folsom Parkways. You've already received from our organization a letter of support of this resolution, resolution number 11131. We asked you to prove it as written. But I'd like to build upon Bruce's comment about thinking innovatively. I'm at this podium now, I think for the third time as a citizen on this topic, concerned about the trees and PG&E's approach to this. I sat at that table for a decade with a similar concern about consistency in the evaluation of the corridor. I'm not going to speak about oak trees, I think Bruce and Julie have done that. I want to speak about invasive species removal, which is on their list as well. Unfortunately, it's, it seems very inconsistent. On one hand, there's a large Chinese tallow tree marked for removal. Fine, it is, it is directly under power lines. It is an invasive species, it's big, it's got to go. Right next to it are probably 20 or 25 more of the exact same species. It's on a little drainage corridor, so it's getting a little extra water during the year. So these things grow and they propagate and they spread around the community. We don't really want them because they are out competing our native oak trees. So if PG&E is really thinking down the, down the line in the future, why wouldn't they go ahead and remove the other 2025 invasive species, also directly under the power lines, and get it done before they're big? I can't answer that, but it should be done. Secondly, just another 150 yards away, a very large eucalyptus tree, also not native, planted outside the neighboring residence, tall enough that if it fell towards the power lines, it would take out the lowest line. And why that hasn't been targeted for removal, I couldn't tell you. But it's a very large invasive species, or non-native, they're not super invasive, but non-native. And it's not targeted or, or tagged for removal. Yet, in, in my opinion, I'm a landscape architect, I know, I'm not an arborist, I'm not Amy by any means. But it's a safety hazard as well. So what my point is, it's an inconsistent approach to this. My proposed solution, please adopt the resolution. Also, please direct staff, maybe use the, the Tree Fund to do an overall maintenance management plan, a long-term maintenance management plan of the corridor to address the trees that don't belong there. The trees that can be maintained within the MVCD is the minimum vegetation clearance distances.
Their times.
Because that's really the point, is safety within those minimum distances. And plant trees where they could mitigate some of this removal, where the trees can grow and not interfere with the power lines. We want to be safe, there's no denying that. But there's room for the trees as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, you might want to take a pause and do you want to consider a motion to waive the 1030 rule?
Sure. Is there a motion? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive the 1030 rule.
Is there a second?
That's good.
I'll second it.
All right, will the clerk please call the rule?
What? We're going to be done in 10 minutes.
Council members Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes, but Mike just jinxed us.
No, 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 I absolutely didn't.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to move Resolution 11130.
I'll second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the rule?
Oh, hang on. We can discuss it.
If you like.
Yes.
I'm talking about the prison grove.
Oh, thank you. Please move forward.
Will the clerk please call the rule?
Council members Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, and then I will move Resolution number 11131 with the expectation that we will discuss it.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the rule?
No, no, we want to discuss it.
Time for discussion, and I'd like to comment. I would like to comment first, if, if it's okay. I just want to repeat some things that I said when we had the more elaborate version of this discussion in the past. PG&E, to their credit, has been part of an ongoing discussion about how to maintain that corridor safely. I believe they have good intentions and they have a very challenging responsibility to keep all of us safe. Okay? They have very prescribed rules that have been handed down to them on stone tablets from the CPUC. And they try and interpret those to the best of their ability. And with respect to Jonice's comments, I think this resolution, as much as anything else in my mind, is just simply memorializing the seriousness that we have about those, that particular grove of trees and why we got into that negotiation and large discussion in the past. Not to try and raise the temperature on the ongoing talk of what to do there, but rather to pass forward, because all of us are not going to be on the council forever, to pass forward the responsibility to future councils to take a similar view and to make sure that where there's opportunities to preserve those trees, we do so. So that's why I moved the motion, that's why I think that the formulation of it is appropriate. Even knowing that there are, you know, sort of legalities to things that mean that in some respects, it's not enforceable. I think it is a mindset that we just want to pass forward to the future councils.
I have a comment. So while I think we all agree that PG&E has an obligation to, you know, maintain those, those lines in a safe way, you know, if I'm remembering correctly from, from past discussions, they don't have a mandate to remove trees. The mandate from the CPUC and FERC and NERC and all those acronyms is to mean that maintain that minimum vegetation clearance distance. So why wouldn't we just add into our resolution, whereas all these things, be it for the resolve, yada, yada, something about that we expect them to, to maintain that, that MVCD. It's not, it's not a mandate to remove it, but we're saying, yes, you, you, we know you have this responsibility.
I agree with you, Sarah. I think, I think we would never want to ask someone, another entity to stay, not stay in compliance. But I think we could probably ask them to demonstrate to maybe the arborist that there's no other option but cutting them down. So that if trimming was going to kill the tree, there's no other option. I think that could be, I don't know if you'd need a separate ordinance for it, but I don't see why we can't put that on them that they have to.
That, that has been our negotiating position when we revisit this.
Because I appreciate you saying we inform councils, but we don't go 10 years back and look at, unless it was, you know, a resolution or something. I mean, go ahead, Amy.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to bring up to the council that PG&E currently does have a work scope pending. And they do have a deadline to the end of the year to get their work done. And the Kleins did allude to this work scope. There was back and forth between PG&E and city staff. They did remove some of the trees from the removal list and move them to pruning. But there are a handful of small oaks under the power lines that staff did not feel comfortable pushing against removal. And PG&E is waiting. They, they are waiting for after this meeting to engage in their work. They just did get their encroachment permit just yesterday. And so I just want to make the council aware that PG&E does have a work scope for this year and they do have a deadline to complete that work by the end of the year.
So, so I think that's fine. So again, going back to my point, you know, Ms. Foster Downs had mentioned, you know, if, if we pass this resolution, PG&E's preference is that we make this kind of exception for them, right? And I'm saying, okay, great, yeah, we will. But the exception's not going to be that you can't, that you can come in and remove any tree you want. The exception's going to be that you have to do this, you know, maintain these minimum vegetation clearance distances. And maybe we put in some sort of line about, you know, in consultation with the city arborist or something like that. So that when, when a tree does need to be removed.
Do you agree that those, all of those, I think, did you say there were seven, or one of the speakers said there were seven?
There were eight.
And what?
They were a hard argue.
Did you agree that all of them needed to be cut versus did some of them?
The question comes down to reasonability with being able to manage young trees directly under the lowest sag point between the two towers. And ultimately, a lot of these young trees that are only a few years old in comparison to the actual facilities that have been around since at least the early 60s and from what we can see in historic aerial imagery, ultimately are the wrong tree in the wrong place. And everywhere else in the city, that's kind of the arborist mantra, is right tree, right place. And especially when we're talking about a situation where staff needs to be able to go to sleep at night confident that they haven't compromised public safety. There were, like I said, eight trees that staff just did not feel comfortable pushing against on this work scope.
So you really didn't say if you still think some, some of them could be trimmed?
The problem is, is the required maintenance ongoing to keep them pruned. Some of these trees, when you top them, the sprouting growth grows exponentially. They grow at warp speed. And PG&E already is coming through once a year with their LiDAR, trying to detect where those conflicts are. But there are some cases where even once a year may not be enough. And staff feels that asking PG&E to conduct ongoing maintenance at that level is questioning reasonability for that maintenance.
So if we don't question the yearly, and we have volunteer organizations that will maintain those healthy trees at the safe level, because we absolutely, safety's priority. I mean, could we put it in writing or, like Sarah said, you add a addendum that they demonstrate that within a year or, I mean, I, I don't know how to language it, but they need to demonstrate that there, if, if someone pruned it, that it still wouldn't be healthy enough outside of the feasibility of them doing, you know, more and more work. And in that case, then we could engage our, not, our, our local volunteers.
If the LiDAR mapping is the way that you identify things that need to be trimmed?
That PG&E does, yeah.
Okay, so if when they come through with the LiDAR and we have already trimmed the trees that are on our property to a point where they are at the correct distances, there shouldn't be a scope of work for PG&E to do at all, right?
Theoretically.
I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think there's necessarily a reason to change the resolution, but separately resolved to do tree maintenance ourselves to try and avoid the necessity for PG&E to do anything in those areas. But that's, I mean, that's making a budget commitment and that's a separate discussion that's going to have to come up at another meeting. But I think that that's maybe the happiest medium that we could find. Provided that PG&E is at least willing to let us know when they need to come through with the LiDAR test so that we have the work done in, in advance of that.
But I agree.
That sounds ideal.
But I think, I think it would be nice to add something in there that they need to demonstrate that even with trimming, the tree would not be safe. Just to avoid what happened in '21. You know, just to have it in writing, we're not be contentious, we're just saying, you know, to me, we don't want them to stay out of, we don't want them out of compliance. But, you know, it sounds like you were able to save several, I forget how many already you had.
This year, they had 17 smaller oaks on their work scope. And we got them to change their work prescription to nine of those being changed to pruning.
Okay, so I think that's a great example. So with a little bit of pushback and questioning, you were able to compromise on 10 trees that you were able to save with some, whatever the solution was. So I think if we put it in writing and then it requires them to at least demonstrate to you why the only option is cutting versus trimming. That's, that-
I, I am only just recognizing that we can't legally demand PG&E do anything. They have been willing to be part of a dialogue and come up with a work plan that is satisfactory, right? And we want to keep them doing that, but demanding it is really not in our purview. We would have to have the California Public Utilities Commission demand that they do that.
Well, we don't have to, we can ask them, like all of these other things, say, please demonstrate why these, why the only option is cutting. Demonstrate to the arborist. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, I mean, it's not rude, it's saying, taking a little bit of control back to the city. And they still can stay, they can say to Amy, there is no other option here and this is why. That's it, we're just- We're just asking them to have one more explanation and some oversight from you, which for exactly what just happened this year, right? So I would like to see something like that in addition, and I don't think it's stepping over our, our control of our areas.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah.
Is that enforceable in any way?
No.
I mean, asking, asking for fair treatment isn't, you know, isn't illegal. I'm just saying that suppose they said, no, and we're completely done talking to you, there isn't really an enforceable way that we can demand that they talk to us based on
I like the way, I like the way you said that. You're asking for fair treatment, please demonstrate to us, so then you could communicate to the public of how they came to their conclusion that there's no other option than cutting.
I think that is an ongoing process that is happening. I just think putting it into here is, I don't think it helps us really. I don't think it really changes the situation. As long as the, you know, ongoing, the discussion continues, and as long as Amy can sleep at night, we, I think we end up coming out ahead.
And thank you for posting that question. And Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, I am fully prepared to discuss the legalities of various levels of regulations. It's just unfortunately, we're dealing with a different scenario where another entity has jurisdiction over utility tree trimming, vegetation management, blessed off by court decisions that any complaint about excessive trimming or removal of trees rests with CPUC. So it's no different than, say, PG&E adopts a policy resolution, that's corporate resolution that says that the city foursome must allocate 70% of our budget for fire prevention. The city council is charged by the state constitution and also the local constitution, the city charter to adopt your own budget. You can just say to PG&E, thank you very much, we're going to ignore you. Similarly, with city foursome, we don't necessarily get to tell PG&E and all the utilities how they are going to trim trees, assuming that they are following CPUC regulations. If they are, we can complain to CPUC. That's the entity, that's the jurisdiction that has this say in determining whether PG&E or any utility is trimming trees excessively or cutting the trees down excessively. Not even the courts, not even the trial courts have jurisdiction. The law says the appellate court and also the Supreme Court have jurisdiction. So it's, it's, it's not something that, that we are not being innovative about. It is something that we have to deal with because it's reality. So the best way for us to approach utility companies is to work with them so that we can manage them the best we can, conveying to them local values. And as you have seen, they do listen. I don't think people wake up in the morning intending to do bad things. They all have a job to do. So the best we can do is to work with them so that we can manage them the best we can. And Amy has done a great job managing tree trimming activities.
All right, should we just vote on Mike's motion?
So.
You have a motion in a second.
Mr. Wong, one more thing. I just want to make sure, right? We want to amend the, you know, motion with the regulations, MVCP, whatever those guidelines are. If we do proactively with innovative, you know, ways and PG&E radar, whatever that comes, and it won't trigger those trees are ready for cut. So that's what, you know, we are trying to do, working with them, working with them. Once we pass this one with that conditions, not conditions, the trimming, we will do trimming, that's what we are trying to say here. I don't think so. CPUC is, PG&E is going to do the trimming. They will only put this tree, no, as per CPUC and MUCP guidelines, we're going to trim. In that scenario, sorry, we are going to cut. In that scenario, even though we pass this, do they have to even notify us or did they just do it?
They have full legal authority to traverse upon any land, even without permission under state law for purpose of safety, safety, right? So there are many, many ways to interpret what safety means pertaining to any particular tree, and hence we're talking about trimming versus removing.
Makes sense.
And if we're going, if the council were to amend the resolution by inserting a standard that they are already required to meet.
Yeah.
And the standard is not city standard, right? The standard is somebody else's standard, which can change over time. If they're already required to meet, I, we don't get to, we don't get to police whether they meet it or not. We get to complain about whether they meet the standard or not to CPUC.
Yeah, okay.
Let's just vote on Mike's motion.
Actually, I'd like to add a.
You can make a substitute motion.
I'd just like to add on to it.
You can make a substitute motion, because I don't want to, I don't want to accept any amendments to my motion.
I don't, do you have a right to do that? I'm not pushing, I'm not, okay.
You can make a substitute motion and that.
Yours will get voted on first. Yeah, the substitute will get voted on first.
Okay, so I've never done that before, so that's a new one. Okay, yeah, I wasn't trying to be cheeky.
We're breaking new ground.
Yeah.
It's after 10:30, so we have to.
So make the motion? So I pass, I make the motion to pass resolution, I don't have it up, 11131?
31, yep.
Yeah.
In, while adding, I would like them to add a statement in there, demonstrate, have PG&E demonstrate, or whatever entity demonstrate why a tree cannot be trimmed to meet safety standards. Okay. Is that, is that clear? Want to make sure I'm saying it right?
We can, we can, yes, I think I hear council, whereabouts in town, we can make that happen.
Is this directed at PG, just for clarification?
Well, I think we're talking mostly about PG&E, so that would be my.
Is the motion anybody doing tree maintenance, or is it specifically PG&E?
If anyone has the authority because of property easements and all of that to recommend cutting a tree because of safety reasons, then I would like them to demonstrate to our arborists that the reasons why it cannot be trimmed to meet those safety standards.
Are we talking about utility companies, Madam?
Sure.
Utility, okay, utility companies, okay.
Yeah, you know, before anyone goes to second, here is my recommendation. I see the passion from our community. We don't want to cut any trees. I get it. We evolved from 2020 to 2021 to today. They already have the super stick. They can do whatever they want to do. We can only complain to CPUC. So my recommendation is, you know, once we pass this one, it's going to escalate to smud as well as PG&E all the way up in the food chain. It's going to create some rupture. It's going to create more work to heal that rupture to our staff. Whatever we are thinking here, allow a year or two, I agree with, you know, one of our citizens' recommendation, see whether we can demonstrate alongside PG&E, trying to trim those with volunteer coordinators, let's demonstrate together and save those ones, not to enter into this landmark resolution. It is going to create some friction. We want to build the consensus and friends around us. That's my recommendation. Let's demonstrate together, not to entering into this second one. And if, if, even though we are going to pass, they are going to ignore. And smud, even though they are not here, they want to talk to us, they may follow the suit of all those regulations policies. So that's my recommendation to my colleagues. Work with us, work with our volunteer coordinators and the next agenda item which we are going to approve, an arborist and PG&E, they will be at the, at the table and see what we can do. That's, that's my view at this point.
So you would need a second to that substitute motion?
City Attorney, can I have, I have a question, because I need clarity. So we have a motion right now, and we have a substitute motion that's asking that we have PG&E or any utility company provide us reasonings of why a tree would need to be cut down, correct? However, they're not obligated to do that. I just want to make sure that. So we're kind, we're stating something in this motion that has no repercussion if it doesn't happen. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And I caveat, yes, that is correct with this. As you know, your staff, people are the city organization's biggest assets. We have smart people who have great people. We have, we have people like Amy, who's so good, who are so good, working with very difficult opponents. Not saying PG&E is opponent, not saying smud is opponent, just they're great in working with challenging situations. And I think it shows, what Amy has done shows.
Yeah.
And sure, people come and go.
Yeah.
We come and go, PG&E staff come and go. Regulations and laws get changed too. They don't get cast in stone and don't get changed. So as of now, the reality is such that working with utility companies so that we can best manage them appears to be a better course of action.
Yeah.
However, Councilmember Roarbaugh's approach is not wrong either. We can insert in the resolution in order, be it further resolved, that any utility planning to remove landmark trees show, demonstrate to the city arborist why such trees cannot be trimmed instead, can be in the resolution. So that would be something that we can actually show them. This is what the community would like to see. Again, I don't think people wake up in the morning intending to do bad things. To the extent that they can make things work, sure, why not?
So how I see it helping is that it gives Amy a little bit of, I might be wrong, but a little bit of, not necessarily authority, but direction on, we want her to go, like she did just recently, go one step further to find out why it can't be trimmed. So it gives you a little direction from, or whoever's arborist, that's saying, this is what the council would like to see, reasonings why, and then you, in theory, get to approve it. So that's, that's kind of how I see it. Gives you a little bit more authority to go push a little bit.
So can I get clarification, a little more clarification? So let's fast forward 10 years from now, and this resolution comes up, it's a whole different council. This council says, oh, this resolution says that you must, or that this resolution says that you need to give us reasons why a tree needs to be cut down, and these utility companies are going to telescope pound sand. Is that really what can happen?
It can, but it doesn't help, it doesn't have.
No, I know, I know, I mean, we have.
Laws change, regulations change, right? So if laws remain the same, CPUC regulations and policy remain the same, then potentially yes. But that, but that doesn't mean that's, you know, sometimes I say to people, no doesn't necessarily mean the end of it. It may mean we need to approach it from a different way, a different, you know, different, different perspective. So, yeah, certainly they can, but if we're continually able to leverage your human resources, your human assets in managing difficult challenging situations, then maybe that will bring better benefit to the community.
And can I just give a little, a little feedback? Again, I just want to reiterate, the meeting we had a couple of months ago with Amy, Janice, Elaine and I, and I really felt, walking away from that meeting, that PG&E said, we want to work with you. We want to work with you to ensure that, that we meet the community's needs and the community's desires. And I felt that, and if I recall correctly, Janice, PG&E has made it, they created this position that you are now in to resolve the issues of PG&E coming in and, and doing these like mass cuts. Like, so that position was created because of something that happened a couple of years ago. Is that correct? Is that what I remember?
This position was added to, so we have more communication with our, our community.
Can you, can I have you come up and speak? Because I think, I think this is a very valuable part of the conversation that maybe isn't being discussed. And, and I just left that meeting truly impressed that PG&E truly has an interest in what happens with residents and trees. And so can you share a little bit about how your position came about?
So yes, we have local government relations representatives throughout our service territories. More were added so that we could have really a close, a closer pulse on the community to create better dialogue and to know really what's going on so that if problems or challenges come up, that we can work closely with those communities to resolve those challenges. So that is one reason that this position was added.
Okay. Did that job description say you would be attending council meetings at 10:43? Thank you, Janice.
I'm an old head at this.
Thank you.
Janice, while you are here, I know one of our citizens advocated that, you know, there are few other, you know, eucalyptus, you know, those are more dangerous, you know, we missed. We means PG&E missed. So things like those, you know, through Amy, can we handle through you to add to the cutting list, which we?
So I'll have to say, I'm not on veg management.
Okay.
That is not my purview. I work directly with the communities and the city council and elected bodies and city managers. Our veg management team would have to be the one that we'd have those conversations because they're really the, the experts on what trees need to be removed or pruned and, and how we can maintain them along the corridor.
Oh, through you, I mean, not you.
Oh, yes, yes, start with me.
Because, you know, we feel like it, and you are our local government contact to work with, through whomsoever on the other side.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I call Amy whenever anything comes up and I reach out to the city manager is also, whenever anything comes up, I try to keep that line of communication open so that we can have a dialogue and see where both sides are coming from and how we can find some sort of resolution.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So I'd like to say one more thing, and I'll try to have it be the last thing. I see this as a way to communicate more. This isn't telling them they have to go out of compliance. This is just telling them how we want to be communicated to and what we want to be communicated on. I don't see any harm in this. So, I mean, I guess we don't have a second yet, so we probably shouldn't even be discussing it, but there's no harm in this, and all it does is communicate further to our staff and also to utility companies of what we would like to see before they cut.
I'm willing to second it so we can vote.
All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalantchela?
I know, building relationship is very hard among the governments. It's not that my no vote is want to cut the trees. We are rupturing the relationship here. My vote is politely no.
Kozlowski?
No.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
No.
So the motion fails.
All right.
So that would return us to Councilmember Kozlowski's original motion to simply approve resolution number 11131.
Would the clerk please?
We have a motion, a second.
Yeah, we have a second. All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalantchela?
This is more dangerous. So again, my response is no for this one.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right, would the clerk please call the next item?
Item number 13 is resolution number 11116. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Sacramento Tree Foundation for tree programs and tree planting and maintenance for three years commencing in 2023.
Hello again. Homestretch. All right, so this is another return item from the last meeting. We had this contract renewal proposal on the consent calendar, and council asked for staff to go back and do a little bit of research and then return with some findings on whether or not a city staff position could potentially take on some of the tasks under the Sacramento Tree Foundation proposed contract renewal. What did I do? There we go. Okay, so just a very brief overview of the previous and the renewed contract proposal. The contract is broken up into two segments. One segment is for tree programs for $60,000 under the previous contract, $100,000 per year for putting trees in the ground for our mitigation planting projects, equalling $480,000 over a three-year span. The renewed contract goes up a little bit because of increased cost, but also a little bit of an expansion in the service that we were asking for. So this proposed renewed contract would be. So this proposed renewed contract would be $90,000 for the tree programs, $125,000 for the mitigation planting projects, which also includes three years of maintenance for each project to ensure that trees establish, and both of those totaling $645,000 over three years. Something important to note is that this previous contract and the proposed renewed contract would be funded by our Tree Planting and Replacement Fund, which is replenished through city collecting mitigation and luff fees, which we take on when folks remove protected trees. Something else to consider with this fund is that it is an inconsistent revenue source, and long-term projections show a diminishing forecast in that replenishment. So staff did take council's direction into consideration. We did have some internal conversations about what a volunteer coordinator position with the city would entail, and we came up with a long list of potential tasks that this position could take on. And within that scope, a small portion could be handled for volunteer coordination of tree planting and tree care events. However, given the full suite of services we would be getting under the renewed contract just for the tree programs services and all of the expertise with arboricultural knowledge and skill sets that go with that small portion of volunteer coordination, which includes planting plans, species selection for our planting projects, training volunteers for proper tree planting and proper pruning techniques, marketing their neighborwoods program, which is leveraging their free smud funded trees, and then education. Staff determined that it would make more sense to have everything inclusive under this contract when it comes to volunteer coordination for tree planting projects. And then also this other portion of the contract, which requires very specialized knowledge with regard to our mitigation planting and irrigation design and long-term maintenance. This is an example of a recent project we did under the previous contract. We had a planting volunteer project at Handy Park. And using the suite of services that we get through Sacramento Tree Foundation, their arborists were able to collaborate with city staff to create a planting plan. And then the day of, they did also put on the the planting demonstration and facilitate the event. And just a quick list of accomplishments that staff have achieved through our joint partnership with the Sacramento Tree Foundation and volunteers. We've put 420 native saplings in the ground. We've planted over 100 trees in parks. Sacramento Tree Foundation delivered almost 1,100 trees to Folsom residents to help us bolster our urban forest. And then numerous educational flyers, planting and pruning demonstrations, and because we love mulch so much, we've spread over 200 cubic yards. These are the two active Sacramento Tree Foundation mitigation sites we currently have in the city. Staff was directed to kind of highlight these specific locations because we also have developer-managed mitigation projects in the city. And it was conveyed to us that it was important to highlight where Sacramento Tree Foundation is managing these projects to compare the success rate. This is an example of what one of their proposals looks like, just to further demonstrate the specialized knowledge and expertise that comes with the Sacramento Tree Foundation services under the contract. They give us a breakdown of the project, both in cost and the maintenance, not just annually, but seasonally, going as far in detail as irrigation applications, when planting or replanting, excuse me, happens, weeding, mulching, and that kind of thing. And these are just some pictures of the fund we've had with the Sacramento Tree Foundation over the last three years. And also a note to the council that we do have two projects that we have been planning for over the last few months and are hopeful pending approval of this contract that we will be able to do in December. One would be putting trees in the ground in our under-canopied neighborhood just across the street here from City Hall. And then just a week later, in Folsom Ranch, our 2023 mitigation sapling planting project.
Is part of that planting the edge of Theater Judas' playfield?
I don't believe.
Too bad.
Also, I do want to note that we do have two representatives from the Sacramento Tree Foundation here tonight. I want to thank them for sticking with us tonight. So if you have any questions specific to them, they are ready to answer questions. And with that, staff recommends that the council adopt resolution 11116, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the Sacramento Tree Foundation for tree programs and tree planting and maintenance for three years commencing 2023.
Are there any questions or can we go to request to speak? Yeah, you have one request to speak tonight from Bruce Klein.
Evening, Mayor members of the council, Bruce Klein. Amy does need assistance for sure on this. We've seen this tonight. It kind of exemplified how much help she really needs. Sacramento Tree Foundation has been a great partner with Friends of Folsom Parkway. They attend our meetings, they work on our volunteer projects. This, you know, all due respect to YK, volunteer coordinators are essential in this town, not on this issue. This is one that really requires special expertise to coordinate with groups like Friends of Folsom Parkway. And when PG&E removes trees, we hope that we can work with with the Sacramento Tree Foundation to do some replanting through this corridor and to enhance that corridor using groups like Friends of Folsom Parkway. Thank you.
Okay. You have no further requests to speak on this?
I have a question for, I think it's you, Steve. I liked the suggested idea that that we, one of the proposed solution was to direct staff to the overall maintenance and to develop overall maintenance and management plan. I think that's being the proactive trimming and everything that I think was Bruce and Robert that talked about it. Would I do that with a new agenda item to bring back what that would entail? Because I know we can't discuss it once we pass this motion.
You 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 don't necessarily need to bring it back. You with your colleagues can give direction to staff to add that to the scope of work so that the tree foundation can take a lead, can take a lead in making that happen. Of course, depending on the resources, depending on how many trees and how much it may cost, they'll be able to work with staff to prioritize the task.
Okay, so the city would still pretty much own that because they're working with us.
That's right. Exactly right. Yes, Mia?
Okay.
That was my understanding.
All right, any questions or motion?
Oh, I do have one quick one. Amy, if you don't mind, on the 430 trees wherever we planted, the mitigation, yes, the previous one. The purple color ones. I'm sorry, the next slide.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, this is the one. So we planted approximately 430 trees here. Before I go ahead and comment, I know I did have a review, agenda review meeting. When I use the word volunteer coordinator, we stick to the volunteer coordinator, but unfortunately, we lose the the synopses of a person with the tree knowledge, not a just a volunteer coordinator. Unfortunate, but that's okay, you know, a person with the tree knowledge with the volunteer coordinator skills. And there is nothing wrong on the Sacramento Tree Foundation. Let me ask you, you know, a few quick question questions. I know at the Das Coyotes, we planted 140 trees in a bare land. And I was looking at thus 155 miles length of trails in Folsom. Several trails has not even a single tree or nothing. And we do hit decent three months, heat waves and everything. So rather doing these kind of things going forward, can we identify those trails? For example, Empire Ranch behind, I know, the new oak, there is a big trail, no trees at all. So rather than somewhere planting these trees, plant alongside the trails as a part of the mitigation.
So that's kind of a multifaceted question. For Empire Ranch, there are a lot of opportunity areas. Unfortunately, right now, the code doesn't allow us to plant mitigation trees on property we don't own. And another, the most common difficulty we have with locating sites to plant trees is access to irrigation. That is the number one challenge that we constantly deal with when we're looking for a site. Finding a site that we can work with is our biggest challenge. So I do hear you, and we are absolutely dedicated to exploring the trails to see if there are opportune sites to put mitigation saplings in the ground. I just want to caution that we do have to contend with site challenges that oftentimes do result in us unable to plant in specific areas.
So we are doing, but we are not finding. Is that the answer I'm getting? Hence, we are just planting in empty lands?
Right now, so these sites were chosen because of access to irrigation and enough space to put at least 50 trees in the ground. So those are kind of the parameters that we try to achieve. Typically, we like to get 100 trees in the ground at least for a project. That's not always possible. The project we're hoping to plant next month is actually more around 85. But kind of, yes, is is the answer.
Right. You know, again, I just want to take one more deep look before, you know, again, as before we pick, that one is 148 trees, so that's not a small one, certainly. Be more creative and use of that plants, you know, where people can down the road. When you were presenting the 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 CDCR property, there was a trail going on, and I saw the big trees around. So if you see, fast forward again, 20 years, 50 years, take a deep look. That's all I'm saying one more time. And the other one is also adding some colors to all these. I know you did an awesome job at the historic district, putting that colors. When we plant these kind of trees, can we add colors to that one?
For the mitigation projects, we are restricted to using natives, and our native species are very limited in number. We have our native oaks, we have elderberries, which do give a little bit of fall color, and we have red buds. I think the biggest opportunity to plant fall color would be in park-like settings where we have a larger range of species to choose from, where we could put some ginkgos in the ground and get that really spectacular yellow this time of year, or the red maples or the tupulos that are just fire engine red. So I think those are the kinds of sites where we have the most opportunity to really get some spectacular fall color for the mitigation sites, just because of our native species distribution, that's a little more difficult to achieve because we just, our native species don't like to show off in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Visit Michigan.
I'm going to move adoption of resolution number 11116.
Second.
All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
I'd like to make an amendment. Are you going to refuse it? Because that was.
What is it?
To work with Parks and to add, to work with Parks and Recs and arborists to create
a overall maintenance management plan for trees abatement and invasive species.
Is is that normally in this scope of work, Amy?
That was not part of the previous contract, and I hesitate to speak for Sacramento Tree Foundation on that.
I do not accept your friendly amendment.
I don't like this new thing.
Okay, with no acceptance of the friendly amendment, we'll call the roll. Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalenchela.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Roerba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right, would the clerk please call the next item? I'm almost afraid to call it. Council request for future agenda items.
So I have two. So I I know I requested this, and I haven't, I didn't get a chance to ask you about it before the meeting, about the homeless discussion and ongoing crime. I would like to see that before the end of the year, and I know there's only really one option, and that's December 12th.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to make it to December, but we will try. We're trying to coordinate a rather large meeting with several county entities to discuss one of the key points that you want included, that we will do our best if we can get it in December, but it's on the docket of stuff, for sure.
Okay, then maybe we could do it in two steps.
I'll do my, I'll do my best. I'll bring it as soon as I can.
So.
The other one, if you, you know, I think it's worth looking into about creating a management plan for trees. So, you know, if if there are maintenance issues and we could trim trees ourself, you know, I know that it didn't go with this, and I understand why, but is that something you guys would be okay with directing staff? I guess we're not discussing it. I'd like to see that brought back as an agenda for us to discuss if we want to direct staff.
Are we talking specifically about the Oak Parkway?
Oaks, trees, abatement, basically a tree maintenance.
Citywide or the corridor we were discussing?
No, I think citywide.
I mean, as a test case, that corridor might be one where if we can proactively help with some planning and trimming so that, as I said earlier, I'm sorry, if we can proactively do some planning and trimming in that area to reduce the burden on PG&E and help them with their compliance, I think that would be.
I think that's a great way to start.
A good way to start off.
A tree management plan for that corridor? Is that what we're bringing back?
Yeah, at least in a, at least in attempt.
I don't have a plan, but just.
I don't think we need to bring anything back. Part of the landscape or part of the landmark tree program is to work on the maintenance. So we will do that. No need to bring it back. We we will work on it, and if there's something that requires special funding approval, we'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
All right, any other items, requests?
No, I don't have one, but I want to thank city manager. Last time I asked for the Folsom-Codova Unified School District SFID 3 to bring it, but council shut down that, but it is still coming next week. Thank you.
No, I had requested it, didn't I?
You did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you said you are going to work with.
Well, no, and then I went to a meeting, and they had a great presentation, and so, yeah, it's on for, I think, the next meeting. So I do have a, I do have a request, Elaine, while we're talking about the homeless issue. And it came up with the situation that happened at Sergeant Triplet, and it raised a lot of concerns about safety and what are we, what do we do to help protect our firefighters and police officers in situations? Because I imagine OSHA must be all over things like that. There must be standards or best practices to protect people who do encounter these types of situations so that we don't have, you know, that we don't put our public safety at risk. So it just raised concerns about how a situation that, you know, where it was about investigating didn't have the protective gear to protect him from, you know, getting poked or needles. So there mu, there must be something out there that.
We strive to keep our employees very safe. I could provide just a, you know, a memo to the city council to that effect.
That would be great. But we do have protective gear in situations where there's investigations?
I don't, this, I don't want to comment on this specific issue, but I mean, absolutely, you know, safety is a huge priority for our employees, so I'll line that out.
All right, very good. All right. All right, would the clerk please call the next item? City manager reports.
I just only have one brief comment due to the lateness of the hour. A very special thank you to our incredible staff and community partners for putting on another spectacular annual Veterans Day parade, and a special thank you to the veterans in our community, including my friend, City Attorney Steve Wong.
All right, Sarah?
No report.
Mike? Hannah?
The only thing I'm going to report is that I'm going to the National League of Cities Summit tomorrow until Sunday, so I'm very excited. I was able to attend several times on my previous council. Thank you, YK, for distracting. And so I'll give lots of updates when I get back.
YK.
Oh, no, Happy Thanksgiving. That's it, Folsom.
All right, I just have a few, and that is the ice skating rink opened, and we have two tree lightings taking place, one this Saturday at the Palladio at 5:00 PM and the Historic District on Friday, December 1st at 6:00 PM. And with that, we will close our city council meeting at 11:08 PM.
We're done in 48 minutes.